On meeting, clerk.
If I can have Shannon Tredzicki join me down here for her oath of office.
Tredzicki?
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign or domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Welcome to the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Call upon meeting clerk for roll call.
Before roll call, Councilmember Bowen is attending from 679 Kihei Road, apartment C107 in Kihei, Hawaii. The location was posted on the regular agenda according to the Brown Act guidelines. Councilmember Bowen, is there anyone 18 years or older in your presence?
No.
Thank you, and I will proceed with roll call. Councilmember Sullivan? Councilmember Bowen?
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Bash?
Here.
Mayor Protem Grendmeyer? Mayor Newton? Youth Commissioner Lang Louis? Member Shu?
Here.
Member Fiore?
Here.
Member Tredzicki?
Here.
Vice Chair Acevedo?
Here.
And Chair Hedges is absent. Thank you.
Let's stand for a pledge of allegiance. For the workshop, we will go through each chapter individually, ask questions at the end of each chapter. Following the last chapter, we will take public comment and proceed with the discussion. Call upon Community Development Director Robles to introduce workshop.
Good evening, council.
Alma?
Yes, good evening, city council members.
You have to bear with me, it's been a long time since I've had to run.
You noticed.
Thank you, Danny. Thank you, Danny. Good evening, councilmembers, members of the Planning Commission. As you're all aware, the reason why we're here is for a workshop on our, an update to our objective development standards. And this evening, we do have our consultant from Sergeant Town Planning that will be leading the presentation, basically doing the presentation. And then following the presentation, we will be having a discussion for feedback from both our city council and our planning commission. And with that said, I'll go ahead and hand it over to Juan, and he will start the presentation for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Alma. Good evening, Mayor Newton, and members of the council, and members of the commission. Nice to see commissioners again. I'm Juan Gomez Novi with Sergeant Town Planning, and our firm is leading the preparation of the general plan as well as the update of these ODS. So, let's see, we'll, I'll begin with why we're updating these ODS. A key component of the general plan update is to better define Norco's small-town agrarian character. Since the current ODS do not really deliver the character envisioned by the community, it was decided to update the ODS to ensure the next development that comes to Norco's consistent with the Norco's community vision, as well as with the general plan that is being updated concurrently. The, so the objectives are to update and expand the ODS to deliver multifamily and mixed-use development that reflects Norco's agrarian, small-town character, and integrate community amenities that reflect Norco's agrarian character. Here on this slide, we can see where the kind of big additions and changes to the ODS occurred. Basically in red, this is the table of contents that you see here. So, we added basically an urban design component, which includes street standards, street and block standards, street design standards, and also some site planning clarifications for how buildings are on a site, where parking's located, that sort of thing, components that were really missing in the previous ODS for generating a sense of place. And we also did a big update on the architectural standards, which in the previous ODS were focusing on kind of a Western aesthetic, so we worked on ways to improve that. So those are kind of the big changes there. As we get into the update itself, it applies citywide, so any housing, to any housing development project that requires ministerial or discretionary review. It applies to multifamily residential projects with two or more units, so it could be anything from duplexes to multifamily to mixed-use projects that include housing. Let's see here, so, get my notes here. So I'll, so I'll give a brief summary of the new and amended components of the first three items. Sorry, is this, this presentation's a little bit different, but I'll continue going. So, so it starts with public realm and connectivity. So these ODS introduce design standards and place-based architectural standards, guidance that was missing in the previous iteration of the ODS, to guide new development to be Norco-specific, with the goal of creating places and not just projects. That is, developments that are modeled on the qualities of traditional neighborhoods. So these traditional places and neighborhood, as shown in green on the left, and as exemplified by Norco's character-defining neighborhoods, are built on a network of interconnected tree-lined streets and blocks that connect to surrounding neighborhoods, that enable multiple routes to destinations, that provide a more inviting and comfortable place to walk, ride, bike, and drive, and most importantly, contribute to its unique sense of place. Traditional places also provide a variety of building types. This neighbor shown here, neighborhood shown here, provides row houses, courtyard buildings, single-family houses, and ADUs. Conventional development, as shown in pink on the right, is organized around parking lots, lacks connectivity to its surroundings, typically consists of one building type, and not surprisingly lacks a clear sense of place. To achieve this first component of sense of place, the ODS require new development to provide an internal street and block network, including equestrian trails. The standards specify maximum block sizes and how new streets and blocks relate and connect to existing development and adjacent sites. They provide illustrative plans that show how these street and block standards apply to the Fourth and Hamner site, and how open space, parking, community amenities, equestrian trails, and buildings relate to the internal street grid and surrounding streets. They also provide an illustrative plan for the Second and River site. So this gives a developer an idea of what the city expects or would like to see on these sites, especially those two sites. The ODS provide street design standards to guide the design of internal streets, including sidewalks, equestrian trails, street trees, on-street parking, and how buildings relate to the sidewalk and the street. Here you see a diagram of these components.
Chair, may we take recess? It does look like we have the wrong PowerPoint. We're going to load the correct one.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
We're going to take a five-minute recess, is that okay? Okay. I'm sorry for the delay.
So, actually, before I continue, one thing I forgot to mention is that Jean was going to be with us tonight but had a family emergency, so that's why she's not here. Also, this presentation's actually in two halves. I'll be presenting the first half, and I have a colleague in New York, actually, who put together the ODS, who'll be doing the second half. But, so anyway, a little background that I forgot to give in the first round of this presentation. So, I did want to talk about this slide and the next, and then I'll go back to where I was before, so we don't repeat through everything. But this slide here is a very important one. It has to deal with the competing priorities that ODS need to consider in order to make sure, in order to enable projects to be developed. So it includes, and so these priorities are NARCO priorities, and those consist of maintaining NARCO's small-town scale character, supporting and growing NARCO's agricultural equestrian lifestyle, and including commercial sales tax revenue generating uses in new development, especially the larger ones. Then there's state priorities for streamlining and removing barriers to production housing, meeting state housing needs that each city must provide, the RENA requirements. And then developer priorities, which are to minimize risk, minimize costs, maximize profit, et cetera. And so the key for the ODS is to balance, calibrate and balance these so that a developer doesn't come in and just request concessions and negate some of the important priorities that the city would like to see in development. So then, in this slide, we see some topics which can impact physicality. So these are some of the topics I'll be showing in the presentation tonight. And then in the second half, we'll be talking about how some of these may need, may be calibrated potentially to help achieve the first three in the list, the agrarian lifestyle, NARCO's character, and building massing, and that sort of thing. So the sense of place that we're after. So with that, I'll go back to where I was before in the presentation. Give me a second, so we don't repeat.
I see you all looking pretty perplexed. The copy that's on the dais does not match what's on the screen. It's not you. So we just do not have time to go and get those copied at this time. So please follow along what's on the screen and make your notes accordingly. Thank you.
So then, here, an important component is that the ODS clarify the types and quantities of community amenities that new development must provide, including which ones are required and which ones are optional. This was, sorry. Let me scoot ahead here. These slides already went through, so... So here we are. And they introduce a point system based on development size. And the previous ODS didn't really given any direction on which amenities are required, and not anything about agricultural or NARCO-specific amenities. So this introduces a point system based on development size. So it requires NARCO-specific amenities, such as equestrian trails and community gardens, shown in the left-hand column. It also provides optional NARCO-specific amenities, such as a shared equestrian barn, chicken coops, and a commercial Main Street shopping environment. It also has, can offer conventional amenities that you see in a lot of developments, such as common rooms, swimming pools, barbecue areas, and playgrounds. The second component of these ODS that were enhanced to create place-based design standards is site design. In places, buildings are located at the front of the lot, and with onsite parking located behind or next to buildings. The sense of place is made up of the sidewalk, the street trees, the front yard landscaping, the picket fences, the ample windows, entry doors, and ground floor porches that face the street. The street trees separate the sidewalk and residences from the street and any parked cars that may be on the street. Projects, on the other hand, face parking lots or private open spaces, and often back onto public streets behind landscape buffers or walls. There's no separation between pedestrian walkways and ground floor residences and the parking lot. And for denser buildings, the ground floor often consists of cars parked in a parking podium or even a blank wall. So these ODS updates are intended to help alleviate or avoid some of those, some of the design solutions you might see in the right image, an image on the right. In places, pedestrian access to building is from the street and sidewalk or common open spaces that connect to the street and sidewalk through porches and stoops. And common open spaces may be like a courtyard or something like that. Pedestrian access to projects, on the other hand, is typically through parking lots or outdoor hallways rather than common courtyards. And courtyards in NARCO, of course, could accommodate things like raised planting beds and other amenities that the city desires. To achieve these ends, the ODS provide clear site design direction, including building, parking, and open space placement and configuration, and how these relate to one another, ensuring that buildings are located at the front of the lot, and parking is located behind, and the buildings face the street or common open spaces, as well as pedestrian access to units from the street and through common open spaces. These ODS clarify how porches, stoop lobby entries, and for mixed-use projects, shop fronts are designed. Not only are these frontage and access types important for enabling access to buildings, they also provide a human scale and help break down the massing of larger buildings. So these are all components, kind of small-town design components that you see in traditional They clarify where parking is located, its design when located next to the street or sidewalk, and how to screen from surrounding development and neighborhoods. And they direct how parking is accessed, driveway design, and the design of garage door openings, all with the goal of perpetuating NARCO's agrarian, small-town character. And finally, for this first half, building and architectural design. Place-specific buildings reflect the character of their local setting. For NARCO, this includes siding, muted colors, pitch roofs, and wood detailing. Conventional projects, on the other hand, could be located anywhere. The ODS provide enhanced building massing and frontage design direction ensure buildings are house and barn form, in keeping with NARCO's agrarian, small-town character instead of big boxes. Traditional buildings are essentially boxes, small boxes, that utilize simple modulation strategies, such as stepping a portion of the facade back varying the facade height, using different roof forms, using different window types and configurations, or attaching balconies, porches, and bay windows. So small-scale, pedestrian-scale components. They provide guidance on the design of facade elements, including balconies, bay windows, awnings, and galleries, and arcades. Elements found in traditional towns will provide human scale and help bring down the Then the ODS update the previous architectural standards focused on the Western style to guide the design of buildings that better fit this character. Standard focus on the, the standards focus on the elements that are characteristic of traditional, small-town buildings, that are inspired by ranch houses, barns, and small-town buildings. Here you see a list of elements covered by the ODS, and they provide design guidance for multifamily development, mixed-use development, and commercial development. So with that, I'll actually pass it on to my colleague, Andrew Crisman, who's on, who'll be on the loudspeaker above us, who'll work through the, take us through the next slides. So Andrew, let me know.
I ask a question.
Yes.
What chapter are we on by now, if we were going to have questions on every chapter?
This was meant to be just kind of an overview of the big components of the ODS. And actually, what's coming up was going to be a discussion of some of the topics that came up during the Planning Commission meeting that had to do with height setbacks and parking requirements. So we thought we'd give a little rationale of why that was done, and we'll go through that fairly quickly, just so you understand, so there's an understanding of that. If that, if that, okay. So Andrew, are you there?
Hi, all. Yep, I'm here. I wish I were there with you all in person, but I recently switched coasts, so my voice is just with you digitally. I'll be speaking to the final three pretty important topics. And we bring back this slide because we want to discuss these topics in relationship to all the priorities for new development in NARCO. So we've heard that agrarian lifestyle amenities, NARCO character and building massing, and the connected public realm are incredibly important to new development in NARCO, but also managing parking, height, and setbacks. In tandem, these standards do impact what's possible on a site. And so while calibrating these standards, we had to be very careful not to prevent a developer from being able to provide the amount of housing that they're allowed to do by right. Because we, if we are too limiting with these standards, developers can just use state density bonus law to bypass our standards. And in that case, it's very difficult to control which standards they might bypass. In other words, if we have too high a parking ratio, for example, they might omit those important equestrian and agricultural amenities, or the NARCO character, or connected public realm. So, next. So we asked the question, can we strategically adjust some of these to make sure those other priorities and all the things that Juan talked about are protected? And so in order to carefully calibrate these standards, we used our own development studies, and we tested them with on-the-ground examples. Next. And so let's start with parking requirements. Next. This is a great example, a recent project, the NARCO Valley Square project. It wasn't developed under the ODS, but it does demonstrate what densities are possible in relationship to parking, height, and its amenities. It is consistently three stories, and yet it doesn't quite get to the baseline 30 dwelling units per acre that housing development overlay sites are allowed to get. It gets 28. And so it's a full 20% below the 35 dwelling units per acre, which HDO sites could get with a bonus. So it's useful, but it's important to know that on HDO sites, to which these ODS are applying, a developer could do more density than this. It also provides a school and a hotel, but the housing and its parking is within this red boundary. It has some open spaces, but we're hoping to use these ODS to do even better with new development, importantly, with the equestrian amenities and a fully-connected network of public streets and open spaces. In this project, the buildings and open spaces are largely floating within parking lots and disconnected from the surrounding network. Next. Here, we see the parking they're providing, which takes much of the site. Next. It uses market-oriented parking ratios totaling 573 spaces. However, it does not meet the amount of parking that would be required by the ODS that are currently active and that we're looking to revise. Using the ratios in the ODS now, this site would need 257 more spaces. And so we have this outline in purple demonstrating how much space that parking would actually take up. And so in order to accommodate all that, you essentially have two options. Expand the boundary, and therefore not be able to provide the required housing density, and also not be able to provide the parking for a school or a hotel. Or the second option, in order to still deliver the required density, would be to try to fit that parking within the site. And as I mentioned, this is a fully-three-story project, and just as an example, we showed how much space, you know, podiums might take up if you tried to jam in all that parking, and you're just going to end up at four stories. And so here we compare. In the middle is that existing ODS as they're drafted now, and to the right of it is the typical two spaces per unit in zoning. On the left in white is our proposed, which is less than the existing ODS. These are the numbers we arrived at that are kind of blended and calibrated to the size of unit, but centered around two, like the zoning. But you can see that they are less than the existing ODS, because we were worried about how much height you might end up with, or intensity you'd end up with, if you tried to fit all that parking in the site. And then here we have the non-residential parking ratios, similar to the zoning, but one space less per thousand square feet. This is largely because we heard that it was important, an important priority, to make sure you get some commercial in these housing sites, so that it isn't just housing, but you have some nice, active Main Street environments. And so we just reduced that a little bit. And then, let's go to the next slide. And so here, a couple other edits we made are currently in the city. You have two units, you have two parking spaces per unit, but they're required to be covered, because it's assuming a largely single-family pattern. We removed that requirement for covered spaces, so that you could also use shared or strategic parking lots within the block, like this example here, to be more efficient and also essentially allow the developer to choose for the market what, you know, does commercial need surface parking? Do some visitor spaces need surface parking, and other units might need covered spaces? And we also provided the possibility that with director approval, parking may be reduced in exchange for extra amenities above what's required, just to add in that extra option, that extra ability of the developer to incentivize those amenities that we want. Next. Now we're going to talk about building height, also important part of that equation. And so we have three tiers of building height. One is the height that's in the center of the block, 100 feet from the site boundary, and that's four stories. And within a typical site, within 100 feet of a typical site boundary, it has to be three stories, unless you're next to an R1 or A1 zone, and then you have to be 2.5 stories. And that matches the height that's in the R1 or A1 zones. And then alongside each of these stories, we provide a number of feet, which is generous in relationship to the stories, and we'll show some examples of why we do that in a moment. Next. And so here's a map just showing how, in the center of those dotted lines, you have the possibility of going to four stories if they need to, and then the boundary, which would be three stories. And then on the right, you see that red line, which is a setback from single-family neighborhoods, where they would have to match their neighbor's height. And importantly, above the roof line, above these limits, currently in the ODS, chimneys, elevator overruns, solar panels, and other things like that are allowed to exceed the limit by five feet. We've also wanted to ensure that roof access is possible for, either for amenities or for maintenance. And so we also allow rooftop shade structures, covering no more than 30% of the building, to exceed the height limit by 10 feet, and other forms of roof access no bigger than 20 feet by 20 feet, and setback 20 feet. That can also exceed the height limit by 12 feet. And so here are some examples of why we primarily limit height by stories and then add a generous feet cap in addition to that, that we don't expect them to hit, is because on the left you have a really generous, wonderful, three-story building, which has taller floors than you might expect, and it allows a really active, commercial environment with tall heights, so that you can have restaurants and shops in there. And on the right, that's what often happens if you have a feet limit, and they just try to fit as many stories as possible in that feet limit. And so the commercials, that's commercial frontage, and it's all just jammed in there, and it isn't flexible for many types of commercial. Next. And here's another wonderful example of that. These buildings, including the roof on the left, are roughly the same height, and yet on the right, they jammed in four stories into that height. And on the left, you just get a generous, a generous three, three-and-a-half-story building. And so here are the primary changes on those topics. In the existing ODS, you have a 60-foot setback, and then you can provide 35 feet, but it doesn't control how many stories, so they might try to jam in three full stories in that 35, in that feet. In our proposed, we've made it match the requirements for the existing neighborhoods, so it's 35 feet and two-and-a-half stories. And so we felt that only a 30-foot setback was necessary, because you're matching the height. And then in the existing, you have 35 feet for the next category along the perimeter. We were concerned that that might mash down some stories, especially if you have some nice commercial on the ground floor, and so we just added a little bit of flexibility there with the 40-foot limit, but it's still three stories. And then with four, and then with our top tier, we say 40, 48 feet for four stories, because in the existing, with 40 feet, as we saw in that other example, if they try to jam in four stories in 40 feet, it's not going to be pretty. Next. And here are building setbacks. Next slide. So previously, they just regulated setbacks from public streets, and so that leaves the topic of internal streets, or really anything that's going on inside the site, open to interpretation, because they, it wasn't previously creating a connected public realm within the site. Now, we're requiring connected streets and open spaces through the site, and so we control setbacks on all of that. Previously, it was 20 feet, and now we're allowing 10 to 15 feet of setbacks. So we have more setbacks, but we reduce the amount, to kind of balance the effect on overall density. Next slide. So previously, on the right, and this is like the Hamner and Third project, where you just have a project, and then instead of streets, you have parking lots. Instead, we want what's on the left, which is a street, and the setback is 10 to 15 feet. And along the edge of the site, previously it was requiring a 60-foot setback, so a parking lot on the right. And we felt that now that we're limiting to two-and-a-half stories near those single-family houses, really, you don't benefit from having a parking really, you don't benefit from having a parking lot next to the single-family houses. You really just want something the size of an alley or a little drive in the back. So we're requiring that 30 feet. Next. And so here those are at a glance. Next. And there we are. And so we can dive into any of those topics in more detail, along with all of your questions. I know those are important topics. And we really want to pose those calibrations we reached at as questions to you all. It's the result of our study and us looking at the Hamner and Third project. And that's what we felt was a good level of restriction. But it really is a question to you all.
So just to kind of bring this, wrap this together. What was presented in the PowerPoint was basically some of the key changes in the ODS. As far as the big topics are the parking, building setbacks, and the building height. Those were especially, those were some of the concerns that were brought up by our planning commission. So what we want to focus, you know, based on the information that we got, what we want to focus now on is the ODS standards that were provided to the council and the planning commission for an advance. And what we could, what we will be doing is going through each chapter to see, you know, comments, concerns. And we do want to be able to focus on some of the key areas, which basically are the parking, building setbacks, and building height, to be able to answer and kind of let the council know why we arrived where we arrived with the intent of providing flexibility so the city can be able to obtain the desired elements of the objective development standards, realizing that, you know, there is some flexibility in hopes of avoiding somebody like a developer to come in in the future and actually come in with a density bonus and want to get away from providing amenities that we want. So hopefully, this will help a safeguard to a certain point. There's no guarantee, but nonetheless, you know, with some flexibility in those key items, we're more than likely, we're hoping to get the amenities that we would like. So with that, I'd like to focus our attention on Chapter One, Chapter One of the Objective Development Standard, which I'm sure the entire City Council and Planning Commission probably have a series of questions and notes. Chapter One is for the review of the public realm and connectivity standards. And these standards divide large sites into network of blocks, streets, and open spaces with shared amenities, setting the stage for individual buildings. So basically, that particular chapter kind of gives an overview of our, you know, desired intent, which is basically to break up these sites into smaller buildings or smaller sites, in a sense. That way, it's able to provide some connectivity with the existing infrastructure, the city that surrounds it. So I'm going to kind of stop and ask the commission and council if, what questions are, or any clarifications that are needed for this particular chapter. And we'll start with Fia at the end there, if that's okay.
So you're talking Chapter One on...
Yes. Any comments, questions that we have that our staff and our consultant can be able to clarify.
I'm looking at the wrong thing. Chapter One here is the introduction.
Yeah, so Chapter Two.
Chapter Two is what you're talking about?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, Chapter Two.
Oh, okay.
Yes, my apologies.
Sorry, I was just a little bit confused. So no questions at this time?
Okay. Jeff?
I think I'll reserve the questions, specific questions, for our session during the planning commission. I think the main gist is that I want to hear what the city council has to say if there are specific questions I have about their comment, I'd like to ask it then. But I don't have anything.
Mayor?
Page seven. And this is a, this continues through various chapters. So my question is that it was mentioned by the consultant that, in this example, this is Fourth and Hamner. You know, "What the city expects from a developer," I believe was his quote. In our previous meetings, I objected to that there were three driveways shown on Fourth Street and then alleyways shown into a private development. And I think we're all aware of the impacts of existing traffic right now on Fourth Street. We had discussions that the entrances should be Hamner Avenue and Town and Country. And so my question is, why does this still remain as an example? My concern is that a developer will come back to us and go, "Here's the example you showed me. I want to dump three driveways onto Fourth Street and then try to impact privately-owned property." The only thing that should be there at that stop sign at Fourth and Clark is an equestrian trail and a sidewalk. Why did not the consultant staff listen to that recommendation?
Yes, and it is, and, you know, one of the reasons why we're here is what's being pre-planted, it could be possibly the worst-case scenario, but we want to scale back. And yes, you did, that was pointed out to our consultant. And if that is the consensus of the entire body, that would definitely, we can tier back from that. Worst-case scenario, we can definitely tier back from, you know, all the standards that are here before you. And that is the consensus, then yes, everything, you know, we can definitely limit the access on Fourth Street. And I see, I definitely see the concern of our mayor. And it is definitely, that would be a concern that would impose, you know, additional traffic on Fourth Street. So, yeah, and I am, I'm interested to hear the comments from the entire body so we can definitely scale back as appropriate.
Thank you, Alma. That's all I have on that chapter.
Thank you.
If I could just mention, I think the important thing is pedestrian and equestrian connectivity. So along Fourth Street, one way of updating this diagram is actually to still have a street and a sidewalk that could go through, but not vehicular traffic. So you still get that sense of connectivity, but just cars can't go through. So if you're on a pedestrian...
I believe that was my comment.
Yeah.
What we should see there is a PE trail and a sidewalk.
Yeah. So, yeah. We actually do not disagree with your, with your comment. We do not disagree with your comment.
I'm going to pass on that. I want to hear what the city council, just like Jeff said.
I don't have any additional questions.
So I have a question regarding the flood control canal easement, being on the diagram in Chapter Two. Is that something that needs to be there? Because as being an equestrian, I don't think it's going to be safe for anyone to be riding on a flood control canal. And then where it connects to? Because if that's the case, is it going to connect all the way through that whole side of Norco?
This is page, oh, that's page nine.
Page 10.
Page 10.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that would be something that this, the canal easements were identified as potential, as locations for potential additional trails that the city would have to work with the utility that owns those in order to introduce an actual trail there. So there are, on most of these easements, there is like access roads on them. And it would have to be something that would be worked out. It's a, you know, location without traffic, and it would be greened up. There are other places that that's happened in Southern California. And it's an option, but it's not, it's not a requirement by any means.
Okay, thank you.
And it is something we could remove if it...
Can I get clarification on what the mayor mentioned? So going back to the drawing that's at Fourth and Hamner, that is page seven.
Yeah, page seven.
So where the mayor mentioned Fourth and Clark, that is not a street, correct? What I'm looking at on the, or am I not seeing it correctly? On the diagram, I just see where it would be pedestrian and equestrian access only at that particular point. Is that correct?
It's in the center, the way it's shown on here, the way it's shown on...
You're looking on page seven?
Yes.
If you can hear me okay?
Which is, a paseo is a walkway, not vehicle access, correct? I looked up the definition the other night.
Yeah.
So I didn't know what it was.
On Fourth Street, there are three access points. The center one is just that paseo, which could have equestrian access unless they provided it elsewhere. And then the left and the right are streets. So there are three access points, two of them are streets. We, to Juan's point, we want to make sure that blocks aren't too big so you can easily access and walk around the neighborhood and to make sure that the open spaces and amenities are truly connected and public. But to Juan's point, any of those streets could become public paseos, really pedestrian thoroughfares. I did also want to clarify, I think there was a comment about alleys onto adjacent sites. I think our, in the text, it's more explanatory, but the arrows that you see onto adjacent sites near those letters F are really about opportunities in the future if developers wanted to open pedestrian access points for people to get to shops or businesses, or I think there's an exercise place in there. But otherwise, that wouldn't be a connection, that would be vehicular.
Okay, so just for clarification, anywhere in your document where it says paseo, that is pedestrian in nature, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. So then, Mr. Mayor, going back and looking at this particular picture was, do you have issue with the two smaller streets coming out? And then that one in the center that goes to Clark, just a walkway?
I have issue with the two streets that come onto Fourth Street.
Can I...
The paseo, to me, would, that goes back to the pedestrian, equestrian...
Right. So our seniors can walk, right?
Walkability.
Right.
But we all know the traffic impacts that. My objection is that we're using an example that a developer's going to hang us on in the future. And the same with that comment about showing these little alleyways through private development. If we're going to use an example, use something that's realistic. If you drive through that development, you'll see that that's never going to happen. So why don't we give what we really want instead of this, you know, eye-in-the-sky stuff to developers?
So I...
That's going to bite us.
I'm confused then, because as someone that lived next to a development, I did want to be able to walk there and not have to go around the block to get to the shopping center. So when I see the red arrows, if they're not streets, if they're literally pedestrian access, I don't have a lot of heartburn over that because if I didn't have pedestrian access to the shopping center, I would have gotten in my car and drove around the block instead of just walking. And so in some of this, I think that's, needs to be considered. Do we want people to walk, or do we want them to get in their car? And I want them to walk.
I guess my objection, Robin, is that it's the example. This is a commercial tilt-up project that's all fenced off. There's nothing that would be walkable
See, and...
Except for the street that goes over by Norco's Best.
And I disagree.
So why don't we portray, right?
Right, well, and I'm going to push back a little bit because I could walk to Gray Wolf, or I could walk to the gym, or I could walk to the ballet class because all of those things are in that shopping, in those industrial buildings.
You would take that street...
What street?
The street by Norco's Best, where you turn to their drive-in?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. You would go that way, and then you could cut through if you wanted to go to Gray Wolf. But where this is shown, it's all fenced off. These are all small industrial businesses going on. So it's just like, why don't we show it?
Right.
It is.
So they're industrial buildings, but not all of them are industrial businesses in there. So it's more of a mixed use? Yeah, and the medical, and I just go back to, Greg, when we put in that asphalt pathway for the seniors, right? So they could walk down Hamner.
Correct.
And I see, if this goes in the way it is, just proposed, let's say, they would walk down the landscape paseo, and then they could walk to the doctor's office, or they could walk down that area.
I have heartburn on that at all.
Then I am so confused on your comments. Okay. And then my other question to, I guess, the mayor, and I apologize to everybody up here, but you have concerns with dumping folks on Fourth Street just for the amount of traffic? But it's not residential in that section. So I have zero concern with people going out on Fourth and going to a light and getting on Hamner than trying to get on Hamner between Fourth and Town and Country. I know you wouldn't want to make that turn out of that apartment complex onto Hamner without a light or having a protected light. So if people go out forth, they're going to go to the light, and we're not impacting anybody other than the residents that live there. Oh, I got you on that one, didn't I? Yes, one point for Robin.
Thing about democracy.
Everybody gets a say?
Not finished with mine, so...
No, that's fine, but I'm just saying, I want to... Again, when we're looking especially at these HDOs, we want people to be able to walk because traffic is a concern, right? So the easier we make it for people to walk, the better it is for the traffic in town. And I will tell you right now, I would have gotten in a car and drove around the block instead of just going through the door that was, again, put in at the last minute at a special request. But everybody in the neighborhood used it to walk.
That was done for you.
I know, but we shared with the neighbors. That's all I have right now.
One thing we could do is differentiate between street and paseo connections to help, to make that clearer.
Yeah, because the way you have it on your key, it says "street and/or paseo connections." And yeah, because it just leads to the conversation that the mayor and I just had. So making it, it's either vehicle access or it's not, and designated will make it a lot cleaner.
So first off, I really want to thank Senator Roth for co-writing SB 35, our own senator. I really appreciate that. We were all shocked when that occurred. And somebody that a lot of us cross political lines to support. And I just want people to know that Senator Roth co-wrote SB 35. And I like to think that's why he was not re-elected. He betrayed us. The state wants us out of cars, and I'm wondering, I just have some general questions. So the state wants us out of cars, to Robin's point. Part of the reason that our senior center is so successful is that there's lots of places to go to. You can go to dialysis, you can go to the store, you can go to the Dollar Tree, you can go to the sandwich shop, there's, the bank is right there. And most senior centers don't have all that stuff. So I would like to see more of a delineation, and I wonder if we can get brownie points if we become a community that not only has horses, but we put people on their feet and encourage people not to have cars. I mean, I understand the whole thing, we're going to get to that, the whole parking thing. But maybe if we tell people that we're reducing the parking so that people will get out and walk, maybe that'll help us. I don't know. But it's just an idea that maybe we put that into our materials and talk about that. I have a concern, as the mayor does. We are the number-one public employee city in terms of just per capita, in terms of public employees. We have a Navy base, we have the school district, we have the college, all of which is located right there. And so I have a concern, Fourth Street coming down Clark, and I'd really like to sort of keep the quietness somehow that we have just literally a block away at the corner of where the Bank of America is, where the... the Bank of America is, where the senior center is. I don't know if it's possible, I think we do get a development like this, we're going to, it's, it's going to be very disruptive. But if we could keep them off Fourth Street, but have, you know, maybe emphasize the walking. I don't, truthfully, I'm totally, I don't really understand any of this. It's very, very frustrating. And then I have just a general question, and I don't know who's going to answer this. If we do some of the things that you're suggesting, the setbacks, the different things you mentioned, what's to stop a developer from looking at that and saying at the last minute, "I don't want to do any of the architectural features, tchotchkes, things that you're asking for. We're just going to build four stories high, we're just going to put the setbacks at 10 feet." Do they have the ability legally just to say, "You know what, we're just going to do this?" And I'm just curious. Do they have to follow our guidelines?
Andrew could actually, would be a good one to answer this one.
Can you talk into your microphone?
Andrew, can you answer this one?
I can hop in. Yep. So that's why we found it so important to figure out how much we could restrict those topics while still allowing them to hit the densities that they're allowed to hit. If we do too much, if we try to say, "We want to have four parking spaces for three-bedroom units," for example, then we make it more likely that they could make those arguments that you're saying. So if we're too restrictive, then they can start asking for waivers and reductions, and it gets a lot more difficult to know what standards they're going to waive. So in, so in the set, that, set of standards that we proposed, we tried to balance it and, and look, look at a set of standards that would still allow them to hit their density to minimize that risk.
So let's say we have less parking spaces. In exchange for, we're saying, "Please make the buildings architecturally appealing per utilitarian slash agricultural Midwest-type buildings." What's to stop them from saying, "We're going to have less parking spaces," and we decided to waive all the architectural elements, features? Can they do that?
If you adequately plan for the density, they'll have a harder time arguing that you're, you're limiting them. They need to show that they're either being physically limited, or it's an incentive they've earned through providing affordable housing. So if you don't give them excessive limitation, you have a better chance that they aren't going to waive those other things. But it is true that at a certain point, they do start to earn incentives. And so there may be uncertainty, some degree of uncertainty in any case, but we tried to make this so that we're not asking for that uncertainty, in other words.
And then just generally speaking, so if they do build affordable housing and mix it into whatever development they're doing, can they, do they have to do prevailing wage?
Do they have to what?
Do they have to build under prevailing wage? Because one of the things we do know, nobody's building, nobody's building affordable housing, so we're kind of okay with that right now. But if they do, do they have to do prevailing wage?
You know, I can't speak to that because I know that's a topic that is currently changing, depending on the level of affordability. But I do want to speak to the fact that the, it is, it is a fairly low bar now that the state has set for them to get on the board with state density bonus and waivers. They really only need to provide 10% of moderate-income housing, which is 80 to 120% of the area mean income. So it's not that affordable, affordable of housing, and they only need to provide 10% of it at that level in order to start qualifying for these waivers that we're worried about. So regardless of, yeah, the prevailing wage topic, we are seeing a lot of developers providing that minimum level, not necessarily to get more density, but to use all of the allowed waivers that they would qualify for.
You know the answer to the prevailing wage?
The answer to prevailing wages is, it's all over the place.
All what?
All over the place. Most projects, density bonus, all of it, prevailing wage has nothing to do with it. It's only if there's an influx of government cash. You put government cash in, prevailing wage comes, links from the labor unions, all of that political level that fit into land use decisions. However, a couple of bills came down last year or two, that when you see something especially extraordinary, typically it's attached to development by right. You'll see it in shopping centers, you'll see it in different, almost single-use development opportunities, quite a stripping of local control. One of the hooks that's thrown into that is the developers have to use prevailing wages. That was the trade-off to get the development-by-right opportunity. Very limited set of statutes that that applies to. I'd say 99% of it, prevailing wage won't apply to anything, especially the density bonus-driven ones. What you want to keep in mind, the state is focused on creating housing anywhere, any which way, logical, illogical, beneficial, not beneficial. And you can judge that for yourselves, which are. And the only time that prevailing wage, again, got tucked in was to justify, in essence, a full shanghai-ing of your local control. So when you'll see a project, typically it'll come in, if there's 100% affordable, they'll let you do that by right if you're a developer, but the offset is prevailing wages. So as a real-life concern, it really isn't one. It hits the big cities, so to speak, LA, San Francisco, Sacramento, where there's a lot of infill. That's where it really comes into play. So possible, sure, likely, pardon me, but hell no.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Commissioner Langley?
No questions at this time.
And Councilmember Bowen?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes. We're still on, on chapter two.
Yeah. What was that?
We're, we're still on chapter two.
Um, this, is it my turn to talk? I can barely hear you.
Yes.
Okay, this is for Andrew. At Rancho, all the new apartments and condos they put in there, they went with the minimum standards of parking, and it created a big hassle for the sheriff department and the city because they didn't offer enough parking. And people were parking, as you can see, if you don't give enough parking, they're going to be parking in the commercial building, and then we're going to be getting calls constantly about people parking their cars over there. Even for the one-bedrooms, you have to at least have two, and like Kevin Bash mentioned, three to four spots for the others. And I have had to deal with that at a personal level, working for the sheriff's department, that a lot of our calls at night are people blocking businesses, they're blocking people's driveways, and it, it created a whole big catastrophe. And we have a very good argument on having them doing the maximum amount of parking. And I know you guys have the ability, you have the job of creating the less amount, but as far as cutting down the parking, it's just going to create a hassle for everybody. And then, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so this is, yeah, this is a tricky topic. We've, we've dealt with this in a lot of different communities, figuring out how to right-size parking. Ultimately, because of that state density bonus law that we're facing, as soon as they get onto the bottom rung, which we'd really expect them to get to with, with development like this, especially considering the city's inclusionary housing program, they're entitled to request parking ratios that are lower than the ones that we're even providing in the plan. And so the state's kind of taken away our ability to ensure ratios that are higher than their baseline. We've set ours just a little bit higher than the state density bonus baseline to make it less of a target to developers. But ultimately, because they have this capability, really the answer in most, most communities comes to learning how to manage the parking and creating parking programs that weren't necessary in the typical single-family neighborhoods. But now, when you have an apartment building next to commercial, on-street permitting and other strategies that are perhaps new to the city, end up having to be used just because you lose control over ratios. And so that's really, so we could absolutely keep the higher, you know, ratios in the plan. We just foresee those, one of two things happening. One, them just throwing it out and replacing it with the state ratios. And then, and then the second one is scarier. If they say, "Okay, we'll provide that amount of parking because it's easier to provide that amount of paving than the equestrian amenity." And so then they throw out another standard. And so we are preemptively right-sizing that parking ratio or, or hitting a middle number with that parking ratio, so we don't create a target and have a, kind of a cascading effect on, on other standards. But I hear your, I hear your point, and it is a diff, it's difficult that we don't, that, that requiring, yeah, those levels of parking has become, become difficult.
Well, I'm, what you stated to me is, we have a very good argument, and we can hold them to a higher standard, but what you just told me is basically hogwash.
Yeah, you essentially can't. Yeah, yeah, ultimately, it's that you can't, you, you just can't. If you, yeah, if you try to use parking to limit development or try to have high ratios, you're just not, you just can't, can't do that anymore. They're either going to throw it out, or they might throw out another standard.
What we've been seeing in a variety of developments, smaller ones up to 600 and 700-unit developments, you go density bonus and dial it down, at the bottom end is 1.2 parking spaces per unit. And, and we all know that won't work. Developers have finally started admitting that. I mean, literally saying, "We won't be able to market these units at these ratios." So as was noted, it's less a target, they accept the fact they're going to get higher units or higher density for parking, but it's going to come at the cost of something else. I mean, you got to keep in mind, density bonus is purely about money, nothing else. I'm, I'm a developer, I'm going to build something, it's going to cost me X. If I've got to put in affordable units, that's still going to cost me X per unit, I have to buy down that differential. So if I can put more units in because I've cut out parking, if I can put more units in because I've changed elevations, it's a kind of a chess game, or, remember those little slidey things where you got to line up all the numbers, for them to hit their return on investment. And as much as they love you dearly, they will come in and start moving their numbers around to where the project will work, giving you as many concessions and waivers, not the statutory ones, but they'll tell you they're helping you. "We won't go for the lowest parking ratio." Well, that's because you can't market the units, but you're going to hose this on something else. It, it's just literally all in the numbers, and anybody who tells you differently is fibbing to you. They would never fib.
So you're saying that a developer would lie to us?
No, they would have a creative interpretation of reality.
So that's kind of where my thinking is. I'm, I'm the guy who reads what's not written. I, I don't care what's written on the code, that's for everybody else. I'm looking at what's not written so that I could get around it. And so my, my concern is, if we already acknowledging that this bar is set incredibly low for the developer to come in and basically ask for a allowance on this, why are we intentionally making it easier? And, and this is a question that we'll have later, but I do want to direct a question to the, the council member, because this leads into a question I have, in that if we know that we are under-parked the development, then we know that the parking is going to bleed onto the adjacent property. Now, what Robin just said about welcoming people to walk onto, onto businesses and stuff like that, I would like to hear what council's opinions are. Like, we'll just use Fourth and Hamner, for example, that the people there, they're parking in the, in the commercial development there because it's easy for them to park there and walk to their house. What are, what would be your thought, understanding that we are essentially creating a scenario where they are going to be under-parked and that they are looking for parking and there's not going to be street parking, and that the nearest thing is going to be that commercial
I'll start it with that. I think a lot of this is almost benefiting the, the developer right out of the gate. So there was a statement made earlier that, on the slide, that the director can trade off parking for value of amenities, okay? So if your parking is such that you don't have any negotiating room, and no, where, where are you going to trade off for value of amenities? So I think your, your parking needs to be a little tighter, a little more restrictive, so at some point, you have some place to negotiate with. I, I don't, I don't see the reason to benefit a developer right out of the gate.
So, so what does the consultant say to that question? That's a really good question.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd love to jump in here. So it's not that it is lowering the standard out of the gate, it's foreseeing the fact that it'd be very easy for them to lower it on their own. And ultimately, what we're proposing is, could we lower these, could we calibrate some of these standards, the parking, you know, downward a little bit, and also height within the center of the, within the center of the site, so that we have some control over, over those standards which get bent, rather than if we hold to the high standards for parking and the low height, they will then get to choose which standard to throw out. So we, so we are proposing that these two standards are ones that could be molded preemptively, not giving them away, but molding them preemptively, so that they can't make the argument that we're blocking them from, from delivering the amount of housing they are entitled to deliver. So, so we are kind of making the choice for them. We're saying, "You can have this lower parking ratio so that you can't tell us you're not going to provide equestrian amenities." And the reason, one of the important reasons why we're, we're choosing parking is because they can essentially get that anyway through state density bonus law. So we are kind of taking some control over it and minimizing the risk that they just choose whatever, whatever standard that they want to throw out.
So I, I do want to ask a real quick question on this because we're talking about two different things here in terms of, our ODS is talking about what the developer is going to be, kind of being required to do. But the other thing that I think all of us up here is being tasked to consider is the impact on the neighborhood beyond the development. And, and that's kind of my concern, is that, okay, we understand that the developers at a great advantage here over us in all the tools that the state has provided them, but as Bill has indicated, these developers are already admitting that even, even the low numbers. has indicated, these developers are already admitting that even the low numbers, it's still not enough parking. And so I feel like we're setting ourselves up to a point where we're kind of inviting these developments to kind of infiltrate into the neighborhood, and I feel like we're doing a disservice if we just kind of cave into that without kind of considering what it's going to do to the adjacent neighborhoods.
So that leads me to a question, and I don't know if it's going to be a question, Andrew, that you would answer, and I think it goes more to what Jeff was asking. If I have an apartment on the north edge of this proposed development, let's say, it may be more convenient for me to park in the commercial area parking lot and then walk to my apartment. So I think the question was, what do you do, or how do you control the bleed over of parking into that commercial area? Or are there ways that the developer could give some financial benefit to the owners in the commercial area? Because again, hopefully, people are at work during the day, people are not going to be parking there, the commercial parking would be used for business purposes, and then at night, it could flip where the developer would buy X number of parking spots in the commercial area for the apartments, for those people to park. I don't know if those kind of agreements exist or in place in other places, but if that's something that could be thought about or looked at for these standards.
Yes, absolutely. So this goes to the topic of, because we can't limit parking unreasonably, you end up needing to do some management. Usually, parking sharing only works best with office and retail, because you really do have that good split, that daytime, maybe restaurant split. But there are agreements that are possible, there are also ways to protect the residential street parking. Parking, doing time limits on commercial parking makes it inconvenient or impossible for residences to use it, because you couldn't park there overnight, or you couldn't park there for more than two hours if it's a gym, for example, and all classes are less than two hours. Limiting parking to a certain number of hours related to those businesses works for a lot of communities. And so that is a, that's an important set of strategies where we're seeing all cities have to go because of this topic of parking not really being in the city's court anymore. It really ends up being at whatever the developer determines the market rate to be. And so I did want to reiterate to another point that was made. We're not starting off by giving them some, giving this away. We're essentially taking away a target. We're trying to balance the standards to make sure we get all of these envisioned amenities in public spaces and connected neighborhood streets, and not create a standard that they could use to throw out one of those good things. And so it's more of a balancing act.
Can I ask one more? Oh, well, go ahead, Kevin, because mine's about something not related to this, but in Chapter Two. So you go first.
So just a general question, just some of the different committees I sit on. I understand that developers can sometimes be a little bit more agreeable, so saith the developers, if they know what they're walking into. So when you have certain standards, does that make them, you're the lawyer, I should ask you, does that make them friendlier to, if they walk in? I mean, that's kind of a stupid question.
No, no, it's actually a very timely one. The answer is yes, absolutely. You have to remember, development is based on risk, and it's based upon the economics of risk. The lower the risk, the more profit they have, the more friendly they are. The laws, as they started evolving the last few years, some cities would be changing development standards regularly to make it very hard to develop in their town. It's got to be made out of titanium and solid gold and diamonds. And developers would say, we can't do that. The state finally figured out that some of the more combative cities were doing such things. And they said, okay, we're going to stop you from doing that in a variety of ways. There's a whole number of laws, policies, even RENA. I mean, they've cranked everything to lessen local control, particularly aimed at lessening local control to thwart development. And that is where the notion of you've got before you objective development standards, you'll more commonly hear objective design standards. Now, that's architecture and how much reveal you've got to have. The whole reason for that, SB 330 and others said, if you city adopt objective design standards, that means the developer comes in and says, okay, I know in this town, I've got to frame the windows in pine, and I've got to have a 10-foot reveal, I have a setback of 20 feet, I have whatever. You've eliminated risk. The developer knows exactly what you're going to hold them to. So if you have a discretionary hearing, like a CUP or something, and you go, you have to have a 30-foot setback, they go, no. You've set your objective design standards, we own them, we're going to follow them. That removes the risk, it removes the certainty, and it allows development to proceed far quicker, far more friendly, because staff isn't haggling with somebody over what setback or what's this or that. You've got now, kind of extending that to objective development standards. Traditionally, your development standards are your municipal code, your zoning. You look at it and you say, this is what we got to do. Here is the zoning as derived from the general plan. If you take that same notion of objective design standards and inject it into development standards, in a sense, and the consultant fortunately isn't here to slap me, I'm watching you, we're saying, look, if you come in and adhere to what we've told you, we'll be happy and we'll be friendly. And as noted, we gave a little, we took a little, here is a package we can live with. Or you can say the heck with it, we'll go into full discretionary review and duke it out. So this is sort of the lure to say, we have looked at these objective development standards as a community, we found them suitable for our community, if you follow them, we'll be friends. If you don't, we'll start negotiating, and maybe we'll be friends, maybe we'll hate each other. But the objective nature is clearly and solely intended, A, to remove risk, B, to provide certainty, all of that is intended to move housing along a lot faster. So to your committees and that, darn right, sir, they will be more friendly because their accountants can sit down and pencil out to the penny what it's going to cost to put a project in, as opposed to the traditional 10 months of negotiating over all the little details that go into it.
That's kind of what I was told. And then to Jeff, care for the community, common sense, is out the window. A perfect example is the corner of Third and Hamner. Used to be, in the old days, we would stop that project because they cannot handle the traffic. The A through F system, that corner's an F, 126 accidents and one fatality. They're not going to make it any worse, which means they can drop 2,000, 3,000, 20,000 cars on that corner, and there is absolutely nothing we can do about it. And there's 1,000 ways that they do, they make you make unsafe decisions. And that's part of the reason we're so upset, because they're not just destroying communities, they're actually making things unsafe when the people on the ground are saying, wait, this is not right. And by the way, if you buck them, you're a racist, you're a NIMBY, I get all the name calling called at you. So that's part of why we're having so much trouble with this thing. But I appreciate your comments. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
I just had one other quick question on Chapter Two, unmanaged community gardens. Can I get clarification on that? Because I hear weed patch, that's what I hear when I hear unmanaged community garden.
Do we call it cannabis now?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. And among the tomato plants, I'm sure. So.
Andrew, do you want to respond to that, or the unmanaged community gardens?
Yeah, so we reward that with less points. That was, community gardens was in the previous draft, and we actually added in the managed one and added more points. But that's absolutely something that we could either have drop off or be worth almost nothing. We agree managed community gardens, or even a system of community gardens, is superior. So we just provided those at the two different tiers. But that, along with a lot of the other amenities, are something that a candidate should be calibrated over time as well, as you learn maybe what is likely for developers to do, or what things that you're missing. But that's something that could be adjusted even now.
Okay, yeah, so just my personal preference, unmanaged community gardens are not good. So.
I also had another quick question about that, about the chicken coops. I just feel like chicken coops, community chicken coops, that's just a breeding ground for diseases and mess and chaos. Chicken coops can be hard to take care of, so if it's a community one, I just don't see that going very well.
So do we have any other questions on Chapter Two? We'll move, just for sake of time, we'll go ahead and step into Chapter Three, because I think that's the one where we want the most guidance on, because that one does actually talk about the building height and the parking standards, which we've already discussed. Is that okay, if we move to Chapter Three? I'd like to kind of move and see where, you know, commission and council stand in that area. So moving on to Chapter Three, that, this chapter deals with numeric standards regarding height, lot coverage, and parking as described. So we've heard, you know, there has been some comments already on the parking, so I'm going to go ahead and go down the list again to see if there are any questions or comments on this particular chapter, specifically on the building height that's being shown, the parking, any other comments on the parking, and of course, the lot coverage. And we'll go ahead and start with Via.
Regarding the parking, I understand and can see all the different sides to all of this. And as much as we want everybody to walk, just the reality of it, is I do kind of feel that we have to have some pretty defined parking guidelines and requirements. And in terms of the building heights, with what was proposed here, with some of the larger ones being towards the middle of the development, that doesn't seem to be much of a, I don't see that as a bad idea, plus you get to incorporate additional parking under there, I would imagine. So right now, I guess I don't have any real questions. I have more just comments, I may just jump in later.
Yes, and keep in mind, council, that you will see this again. The purpose of the workshop is to allow us to dialogue and, you know, air out the concerns. That way, you know, and to see where the council stands, at where our planning commission can provide a recommendation, and that will be processed or forwarded to the city council. And you'll be able to, you know, look at the recommendations from planning commission at that point and make, you know, additional changes. So that's something to keep in mind. So that being said, thank you. Jeff?
So kind of a general comment, kind of notice for the rest of the way long. I think the big complaint that I have about the height changes is that ultimately, what we're looking to do with the ODS is trying to come up with something where it protects us as a city. And we're up against a density bonus. And so I want to kind of look at all of these height changes as it relates to the density bonus. Because if we're adding height, and that height does not directly translate into an increased density, I don't see why we're giving them any height. So unless we're adding an inch, and that gives them extra density to it, I don't want to give that to them. So that's kind of where I'm at. And I do have concern with some of the images that you guys showed. One of them was a rooftop barbecue area. I think we, at least personally, I want to be very careful about that, because one of the concerns that we had on Valley Square is the proximity to adjacent neighbors, and essentially someone being able to look right down into someone else's backyard. And the concern is that if the property is 48 feet up, and that is a occupied roof deck, they're now standing at, at what, 50-some-odd feet up, looking across the area, they could see everybody's backyard from that point. It doesn't matter if they're 100 feet back.
Andrew, do you have any comment on that?
Alma, page 17 of this chapter on lot coverage. How do we come up with 60% maximum lot coverage of these structures? Where did that number come from?
I'll go ahead, and Andrew or Juan, go ahead and answer the question.
Andrew, you want to take that?
Sorry, that was, yeah, that was the 60%. So that was a study of similar building type patterns, a reasonable way to kind of make sure that sites aren't fully built out, but are reasonably limited with patterns like this. I'm not sure if I heard the entire question, though.
The question was, yeah, was basically, how did we come about to 60% maximum lot coverage?
Yeah, yeah, we see the lot coverage as being primarily limited by all the other requirements, the public realm and the parking and the setbacks. And so that's really in there as a fail-safe on any particular lot. What would be the most that they might, at what point would it become a problem, essentially? And, but it's more of a fail-safe than a primary limiter of form.
So are there any calculations that you use to achieve this number? Or is this just a guess or by golly?
No, that's a, yeah, so that would be, that would be a common kind of walk-up or townhouse type, with side setbacks, a front setback of around 12 feet, and then access to rear garage. And with required open space, it ends up being around 60%. That remains for all of those, all of those required elements.
Okay, so that figure...
But you end up with more, you end up with lower lot coverage for a lot of the other types.
Okay. Yeah, I was trying to figure that off of your Figure 3.2. B, that if that's where you were coming up with that, 60%, that's also on Page 17.
Yeah. For some of those types, yes, but some, but on a few of those buildings, it's lower than, it's within those 60, it's lower than that 60%.
Okay. Alma, I think we should still have further conversation on the lot coverage. On page 23, it's still in Chapter Three, just a question on, it's not really site design, but the example shown, garage doors along the public realm, why don't we offset the garage door from the plane of the building instead of showing this all in the same plane as an example? It's Figure 3.5. A, page 23. It's the last page of that chapter.
Andrew, do you have anything, or do you want me to take this? Yeah, I think off... Yeah, I think offsetting it could be a good approach in that it helps differentiate where the, the parking, you know, access is and sits and facing a public right away, I think, I think that makes sense. Andrew, is there any reason why?
No, this is really a contextual thing. Yeah, often with detached types and single family, we, we set it back. But with larger multifamily types, we find that it can blend in at the same plane as the shop fronts or, or other openings in the facade. But that's absolutely something that could be, be set back if that's, if that's felt as a, as a context appropriate approach.
Well, look at, look at your example and your figure, the building to the left is offset.
Yeah, yep.
That's all I have for this chapter, Alma.
Danny?
Alma, anything to say?
Okay, Commissioner Fury?
Nothing. I would say one thing on that diagram regarding the parking. An important piece of that is that the openings are small as opposed to being a big broad, you know, 24 foot wide opening. But I think setting it back would, would help differentiate it even further.
I have a question. So I'm looking at the building height requirements encourage and avoid. So let's say we go to a limited number of parking spaces. But one of the requirements is we want them to build what we see on the left and not build what's on the right. Can they turn to us, pull out the bonus density and say, we're going to go ahead and accept the parking, but we've decided to eliminate the architectural and go to the, the one we see on the right? Can they do that or?
If we set too high of a parking standard, we do risk them choosing another standard to omit. That's absolutely.
No, 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 I'm saying.
That's absolutely the reason why we wanted to calibrate, yeah, the, the parking to a, to a number that they would be more willing to accept so we didn't make other standards a target.
Okay, so, so to Jeff's point, I'm saying if we did in fact, from the get-go, lessen the number of parking spaces they need, could they then look at us and say, oh, and give them the height? Could they then say, thank you so much for the height right from the get-go, thank you so much for the less parking spaces. By the way, we're gonna, we're going to pull bonus density and we're not going to do the architectural stuff, but we're going to accept, thank you very much. Is it possible that they could just get rid of modulating the fronts of buildings, peaks, all the stuff that we see on the left, which is pretty nice, and build something like you see on the right? And accept all the nice things, nice things we've done?
Yeah. So it makes it a lot harder for them. So after they say, thank you very much for the height that's been calibrated and the parking ratios, it makes them, it makes it much harder for them to ask for more because we've already made it possible for them to reach the densities that they're allowed to reach. Because we didn't set the densities, the densities are for the HDO site of 30 and 35. And so by setting standards that allow them to actually hit that, it becomes much harder for them to throw out the architecture. If we require too much parking or limit height in the center too much, then it becomes easier for them to throw out other standards such as architecture.
All right, thank you.
So regarding the parking, so my sister lives over off a promenade in the, near the Monterey apartments. There's not enough parking in that complex. They park all on her street and all the homeowners are impacted by that. And I did some research on it and they give you so many spaces if you rent a unit in there. Then for additional $85, you can get another space. So they're just going to charge people. And if people don't want to pay for that extra space, then they're going to go on the, where they can park nearby and then walk into their complex. So with the parking being, the parking being limited and being less, I don't think is going to help. That's my only comment I have regarding the parking.
Councilmember Bowen on chapter three with respect to the building height, lot coverage and parking. Councilmember Bowen, are you still there? Okay, so.
So you're trying to get, you're trying to get a hold of me?
Hi, can you hear me, Councilmember Bowen? Okay. So just, just want to make sure that the council did take a look at Commissioner Hedges' comment on the building height. So that's been provided to you. So we'll go ahead and move on very quickly to chapter four on the review and building design standards. And I just, you know, to see if there are any comments on, on the building design standards. So we'll go ahead and start at the end.
Yeah, I think we actually rolled over into part of chapter four with the building height already.
So, I'm sorry, Juan, did you have?
One last point on, on the height. The building on the left, especially if it was a four-story building, you wouldn't, that would not be allowed per the current ODS. So on the right, with that 40-foot high limit, you could squeeze in those four stories. But as soon as you put, try to put a pitched roof or something like that, you're not going to be able to. So the, the standards currently are basically, would generate flat top buildings without the pitched roofs that the city may, would like to see. So. And whether it stays at four stories or three stories, I think it's important to have a slightly higher foot level number of feet so that you can put that pitched roof.
I guess a question to council then. I, I'm wondering if there's a strategy because right now we're kind of treating the entire development as one homogeneous guideline. Whereas ultimately, the way that we protect us is to make sure that we can hit these density. And so if we are saying four stor, four stories for that height without the, without the pitched roof, without the aesthetics that we want, do we want to look at a more nuanced where the interior of the development can have something like that? But the exterior of it, the street-facing side of it has more of what we want as a way to potentially bridge the gap?
Well.
I need some clarification. Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I didn't see you grab your microphone.
Okay. Well, I was, yeah. I kind of had a problem with the conversation on the height that we were reducing our existing setback from 60 feet to 30 feet. On the one graph, I, I don't have that page number down there. But that change concerns me. And that was from how, how close we are to either an R or an A1 zone. I think once again, it, to me, it's the 35 feet. If, if you want to get further away, like Jeff's saying, maybe in the center of the development, possibly go to 40, but 35 feet works. And I'm going on your figure 4.2A. You know, most of these come out at, at 30 feet right now, whether it's, you know, commercial or residential, you know, with the taller first floor. I'd like to see us stay at 35 feet. Then if we have to do a little bit of trading, maybe then we go up to 40. But just the way this is all reading to me is just real choppy. Three stories or 40 feet, whichever is less, two and a half story or 35 feet, whichever is less. How about 35 feet? Clean and concise.
You're, you're recommending 35 feet across the board?
Mm-hmm.
And then using.
This is a starting point.
And then using additional height as part of a negotiating tech.
Correct.
For negotiation.
Yeah, but that setback would have to be, you know, let's say minimum 100 foot, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, what we're recommending.
Yeah, and I'm not agreeing with changing our 60-foot setback to 30-foot for height allowances that was mentioned earlier.
Yeah, and, and one reason for the reduction of the 60-foot setback just had to do with the quality of what could happen in that 60-foot setback. It would end up probably being just a parking lot, which is about the 60-foot width. And again, going back to, going back to kind of traditional neighborhoods where you have a alley and, and shorter buildings, like what you see on the left, I, I think it's more of, does that create a better, you know, condition next to single-family houses?
Right.
Houses, but.
Yeah, and I'd like to add on the topic of two and a half stories or 35 feet, whichever is less. That matches the language currently of the R1 and A1 zones and the zoning. I mean, the reason why we like that is because in 35 feet, you could fit a full, you know, three stories with a cornice at the top of it or a flat roof at the top of it. But when you say two and a half stories, you're saying that that third story has to be within the roof with dormers.
Correct.
And so that's how the current code works for those single-family residences. And we think that's a great level to be at right next to them. And so that's also to Juan's point, because we're matching the same height limit to those R1 and A1 zones, there isn't the same risk of, there isn't a risk of having a taller building next to those neighborhoods. You're having a two and a half story building there. And so a 30-foot alley may be spatially advantageous relative to a 60-foot parking lot.
I'm, I'm fine with the, I mean, so you agree with the two, the two and a half stories are 35 feet, but it's within 80 feet of an R1 or an A1 zone? Correct?
Yeah, with the 30-foot setback, we, that could be, that could be raised a bit, you know, from those edges. The one reason why we steered clear and, and the ODS that exists now steered clear of doing the, a cap of 35 everywhere is because if they end up going for an incentive to raise height, they might do it everywhere as well. And so if we plan for stepping down to the neighbors and going higher in the middle as written now, we control where that additional height goes rather than there being some risk that they, they throw it wherever they want. And that's really the reason why we do that already in the code and we really plan for the heights that they might need rather than leaving it to the negotiation just because we, the city might not have much control in that process.
Thank you. Go ahead, Robin.
I need clarification again, I think. So the proposed setback going from 60 to 30 is to prevent parking in the front of the buildings and make them move it to the back, correct? Or that's the intent?
That's my understanding.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So I don't have any problem with the 30-foot setbacks because I don't want to look at cars parked along the street and having all the parking on the interior is fine with me. And then to clarify, on the slide presentation, slide 29 is basically saying in our rules that it's graduated setbacks. So you can only be at 35 feet if you're next to an A1 or an R1. And then within 35 feet, if you're within 80 feet, you still have to stay at that. And then if you're within 100 feet, then you can go to three stories. And then if you're more than 100 feet from the perimeter, then you can go to the 48, correct? That's what is in front of us today?
That is correct.
That is correct.
Okay. So they can't have tall buildings along the edge, period, if this is adopted?
Yeah, and actually the current ODS has that same.
Same.
Same, yeah.
Right.
And the current ODS is 35, is 40 feet with that 100 foot from the property line. So in the center, it's 40 feet. What we've recommended is a little bit higher so you can get.
Get the pitched.
Pitched roofs and, and that sort of thing. And also accommodate, you know, parking podium or something like that. That was the rationale for, for that update. But there's also the notion of keeping it low to negotiate. I guess that comes back to the question of, do we want, want to make it friendly from, to the developer from the standpoint of them wanting, lowering risk?
Right.
And all that, yeah.
So I guess my comment to that would be, and I understand my, all of my colleagues up here, but I'm kind of looking at it as you're preparing to go in for a test. I think all of us would like to know what's on the test so that we can study and prepare appropriately to go in and take the test and be successful. So I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around why we wouldn't want to just tell them, here's what's going to be on the test, developer, this is what we want, go back and study and prepare and make it pencil out so you can come and build what we want. So I, I understand the leverage piece and I think part of that comes from the developers we've had to deal with. We didn't have these in place. So we were trying to negotiate and we were trying to have leverage and we had none. And so I get that perspective, but I just feel like with the way these are written, it's not about, oh, we're giving up power to the developer because, let's be honest, we don't have any because the state's taken it all. So all we're doing is, basically we've created this mold where they're actually able to fit into it. They can hopefully make some money. And it doesn't have to be an adversarial relationship with the developer. Like, I, I mean, I'm sure my colleagues up here can tell you with Frontier, it's been a horrible, absolutely horrible process. And if we can have this and make it a better process for everybody involved, I don't, I don't see why that's an issue. And then the last comment I have is, I feel like the council's worked very hard to put the HDO overlays in places where they will minimize a minimal number of residents. They're primarily in what I would say kind of a commercial area, but thinking about them, all of them will impact five, seven, nine houses maybe. Every single one of them will touch a few houses, I think. But those are just some things that I want everybody to consider. And then the last question that I have, the maximum in an HDO is 35 per acre, correct?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. And they, there's no laws, no rules that they can override that 35?
The density bonus, they can go.
Okay, and so on the density bonus, what is the maximum number?
That, yeah, that would be handled on a case-by-case basis depending on the affordability. In our HDO zone, it's set at 35. But if somebody comes in with a density bonus, I, I don't know the numbers in the density.
But there, there has to be a set number, it's not like something just pulled out of the air, right?
Yes, and I don't know, off the top of my head, what the law says with respect to that.
Okay. Is there an attorney or a consultant in the house that knows what that maximum number is?
No.
Awesome.
No, what?
So we're making a decision.
It's a chart.
Yeah, that's what I assume.
They put in there, we can pull the chart up and see what the range is.
If we can just have that, like the maximum number you would ever see at Second and River is X. I think that's going to help with some of the decision-making as well.
So my thinking is along with Robin's, I can only tell you that for the four years, I can remember first time Andrew, not our, this Andrew, took me out to look at the apartment complex they wanted to build. And truthfully, they just lied to me. Oh, it's three stories, well, it was four stories. I mean, and then the comment I will never forget is on the south side, they wanted to put these apartments in. And they said, oh, and we're going to louver the windows so that people don't have to look at those crappy houses down there. And that was when I left. But we were totally unprepared to fight this battle. And we, we were so behind the eight ball the entire time. And so what makes this kind of attractive to me is if we can control the architecture, if we can, if we can make it a beautiful Norco-style development as much as possible, then I think we need to, to do. then I think we need to do everything we possibly can do. I think one of the things I want to do in the near future is, I want to sit down with an attorney, and I got some real questions, whether it's Erica or this attorney, I want to sit down and say, because one of the things that would occur is, our attorney would say, do you have this? And we'd all look at each other, they would look at us, and we would have to say, no, we don't have that. And she'd go, and she'd sigh, like, we just weren't ready. So, I want, I want to be ready for this. And then, I have a quest, two questions. Can they, on these setbacks, I guess they can, can they declare a bonus density and say, well, that, we can't, we can't build the density we want to build to if we're stuck at 35 feet? Can we, can they change the setback? Andrew, can they change the setback? I mean, I guess they can do anything they want, right? But we're hoping that we'll have a plan laid out for them, and they'll sort of adhere to it.
Yeah, so in state law, it's, they get, depending on what level of affordability they provide, they get bonus as a percentage of the density, a percentage increase. And so you do still have some leverage, you still can provide physical restraints on where that's applied, but ultimately, you have to ensure that they're able to get whatever percentage that they've earned. So if they've earned 30%, you can still limit how they use it, but you can't keep them from, from hitting that 30%, if that makes sense.
Yeah, so one of the things that we might want to consider is, if we put these in place, we still need to kind of plan some wiggle room also. And then, the other question I have is, at the corner of Second and River, we own a portion of that land, does that give us a little bit more power? And then, I am wondering, this is just totally spitballing here, if we were to own pieces of these various properties, Fourth and Hamner, behind Beacon Hill, where we have these things placed, does that give us more leverage if we were to own some of these properties, pieces of them? Which is the case at Second and River?
I haven't read it in the last year, but the Surplus Land Act actually controls a little bit more what you can do with that site, if you own it. If you own it, the Surplus Land Act says who you can sell it to, mainly to prioritize affordable development developers. So, so actually, you have some more limitations if you own it. However, you have more, you do have more power over some topics, like how to subdivide it, whether you want to reserve certain area for the public realm, for the amenities. So you have more power in some areas, but over which developers you choose, you have a little less power.
Okay, I was just curious. That's all I have, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Just one more thing on height. This is like on B, C, and D, on Chapter 4. And it, and it's only because we've had situations that have come up with, whether it's Palomino or accessory buildings, whatever, but, "Ground, ground floor height shall be measured from finished floor to ceiling and be determined according to the ground floor use as follows." So then, where this, this cutting gets wonky, and this is where I think we're going to get burned in height. "Ground floor level shall be measured vertically from the grade of the immediately adjacent front setback to the finished ground floor, and shall be determined according to the ground floor use as follows." But that's, that's why, when you look at a building and go, wow, I thought it was going to be 35 feet tall, and now it's 45 feet, okay? And I think that's kind of what I'm trying to- Once again, so, maybe there's a way we can, as Councilmember Bash said, just simplify the explanation.
I have, I have a question. So one of the things we talked about, we have a very successful senior center. Would it be advisable for us as a city, for some of these areas, for example, right there, we have talked about trying to market for a senior development builder. And the reason I say that is they have less cars, they tend to be very less impactful. It's a lot of land, but I'm wondering if that's something, can we do that? Can we actively try, we don't own the property, can we actively try to find a way to market, looking to, to find someone like that, if it's not our property? Maybe that's a lawyer question.
Sure you can. Economic development agencies do that all the time. You'd be, in essence, a quasi-broker. If you own a piece of land, often brokers will come and say, hey, have I got a good deal for you? Somebody wants to develop it or do something. So yeah, nothing prevents you from trying to help market or, or create uses for someone else's property. They can perhaps tell you to bug off, but they can't tell you, you can't talk about it.
I mean, then you could include your gardens, there's a whole bunch of things you could include.
In one way of doing it, there's millions, probably, but if you tout it, if you create a city program saying, look, in Norco, we want to see these beneficial uses, this type of development, we're putting together a task force, the strike team, call yourself whatever you want. And that way, you've got even credibility with someone you might be talking to. Hey, you're a developer, how about this parcel here? And the property owner, you're not just a glamorous bunch of government officials showing up on their doorstep, you're, you're part of the task force. So yeah, it's all in packaging.
Thank you.
And there can be a policy or goal in the general plan that, that guides that, you know, that enables that, or identifies staff or something like that to take that on, so.
So, so for the sake of time, I'm, does the council, the commission pretty much have, feel that they have enough direction to make a recommendation this afternoon? So, you know, are there any clarifying questions this commission has with our council at this point? So, if not- We'll continue next chapter.
On any of the chapters?
On any of, yes, listen, we'd like to, on any of the other chapters that we haven't discussed, we'll go ahead and go into those if there's no clarifying questions at this point.
I just have two quick ones, hopefully. Page 39. It was on roofing materials. My note says asphalt shingles. Let me get to it. On, Item 4 Roof Materials, Alma, we're fine, course, standing seam metal, we've written that standard before, or asphalt tiles that simulate wood shingle. Are we talking about, like, the GAF timber lines that I have on my house? And if so, let's delete that. It's either tile or metal, and not a comp shingle.
Did you have a comment?
Yeah, oh, I was just going to weigh in that, yeah, so the, we felt that, yeah, things that simulate wood shingles would be good for the character, but likely are cost prohibitive and flammable. And so some of these newer alternatives are a good option, but we can absolutely omit that. Or if there's a certain category of, of fake wood shingles that should be omitted, we can do that as well.
No, I'm, I'm fine with, like, standing seam, just the way we have that spec written, written, and whether it's concrete tiles, whatever, I'm fine with all of that. It's just that, any asphalt product, no, that's what Frontier tried to pull on us after they promoted, you know, concrete tiles. So I don't want even a mention of an asphalt shingle.
Okay.
And then, just on the next page, just real quick, whether we have to consider it at this time or not, there's, just on desired materials, you had some comments on the underside of eaves, porches, boardwalks. Do at any time, especially with the eaves, do we need to start looking at firehardening in construction of multifamily projects? Okay. Eaves, gables, ventilation, that, that all would fall under firehardening, and I think we would need to spend some time with that.
The governor signed the budget a few days ago, and as governors do, he attached trailer bills. One of them is AB 130, which has about 20 sections, covers everything from ADUs to subdivisions, to firehardening, to every bit of land use we normally touch. They stuck little surprises in. I looked at it today, and they're quite pesky. And to that end, firehardening was specifically called out under, every three years, you redo or re-up your building code. And there's a lot of limitations that just got put in, doing that, because some nefarious cities were changing their building code. It's got to be titanium, gold, and platinum, killing off projects. So there's a six-year hiatus on amending building codes, unless it deals with such things as firehardening.
Right.
So it's very timely.
Okay. Very well aware of it. That's all I had, Alma.
Yes, thank you. So, does the council, commission have any other comments on the remaining chapters?
I have a question-
Sure.
On Chapter 7, specifically, 7.3, where it addresses walls, fences, and structures. In our current code, we don't, well, I think we, I would say we give more latitude to what a fence is than other cities do, sometimes what it isn't. But I'm just wondering, you know, what the council expects a fence to be or not to be in terms of material?
On fencing? My expectation is it's not pink vinyl.
That was one thought I had, yes.
Okay.
Okay, so, we're clear on that one.
I would recommend that we look at, like, Norco Ridge Ranch's specific plan, fence and wall plan, that Alma wrote years ago.
Okay.
That basically is wrought iron, solid-
Wood.
What do we got? Wood on there?
Vinyl.
Obviously, block.
And then, the split rail vinyl fencing?
Vinyl.
Yeah, yeah.
But no chain, no chain link?
No, chain link is allowed-
Correct.
Like, in the middle of your property.
Yeah, only in interior.
Interior use only.
Right, okay. I just think, since we are going to so much detail on everything else, I think we need to beef that portion up.
Good idea, but I would, I would refer back to the fence and wall plan.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't want garage doors, okay?
We have some of those, too.
Like that, right.
We do, we have a lot of those. Stuck in the 60s.
We're going to ask for public comments?
Uh, is that on the, yes.
Anybody? Yeah, we got one.
All right, if everybody's ready for a public comment, we do have one, Bill Naylor.
Evening, council and commissioners. I'm really pleased to hear a lot of your comments, and I won't go over a lot of them, because you've already covered a lot of them, but there are a couple of things that I was concerned about. Previously, at some of the council and commission meetings and such, there was concern about the height limits. I'm not overly concerned about it, except for one thing. How high do our fire trucks can handle it? I know that in town, we don't have some of the trucks that can really reach much higher than the third story. We do have access to pulling them in from, with CAL FIRE from outside the community, but that's, again, further to bring them in. I don't know if there's any way, if these developers want to go high, can we get them to pay for a fire truck that wouldn't reach those? That's just one comment. Another comment is, not too long ago, I had to go visit my daughter, who just bought herself a, a place in a development in Huntington Beach. And guess what? I had to really search for a parking spot for a visitor, because it was close to Father's Day, and of course, guess what? You get all the fathers, or the families coming together, there's no parking. So you really need to look at your visitor parking specifically. The other item that I had was, was mentioned that some of these properties that you're talking about for development actually are partially owned by the city as small as part. What if the city actually built a parking lot or a parking structure in those areas to, and then charged fees for people to use those parking structure areas? Now, again, that's going to reduce the areas, and I know that they can develop housing and such, but still, they can only use the, the development for housing on the property that they own, not part of the city, if I'm understanding that correctly. So it's, there's a possibility that you could get some additional parking areas, especially adjacent to commercial areas, and you might even make a little bit of revenue on it. And then, the last thing I mentioned, or wanted to mention, is, earlier, it was mentioned on about Fourth Street, and access coming in and out of that development over there. I don't know how many of you are here, sometimes early in the morning, I've come by to City Hall or for something, and parking, or, traffic is lined up all the way to Fourth Street, no, to Fifth Street on Hamner, going into the naval base every so often, so you can't even get in. So just kind of, you've really got to think about what you're going to be able to do coming in off of Fourth Street. But those are just some of the comments that I made, thank you.
And I have no further public comment.
I'd like to adjourn for tonight. Thank you very much, everybody, for all the comments, and- We, do we have to come back?
No. Yeah, so we'll go ahead and take a break, and then, um-
Take a break?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's take a break. I'm ready. We'll take a 10-minute, 10-minute break.
Okay.
Yeah.[493.62]
Commissioners.
Appeal notice. In the event that you disagree with the action taken by the Planning Commission in regards to your application, with any condition of approval of the application, which is not a specific requirement of the Norco Municipal Code, you are entitled to appeal such determination or conditions to the Norco City Council, provided that such appeal is filed with the Norco City Clerk within ten calendar days after the requirement for appeals inclusive of payment of an appeal fee.
I didn't. With a meeting with a clerk for public comments, do you have any?
I have no public comments at this time, Vice Chair.
Thank you. Ask commissioners, does there any need to be pulled? If no items are pulled, ask for a motion to approve their consent calendar.
I'll make a motion to approve the Planning Commission minutes from June 11, 2025.
I second. Youth Commissioner Lang Louis?
Yes.
Member Shu?
Yes.
Member Fiore?
Yes.
Member Chaziki?
Yes.
Vice Chair?
I'm sorry, wrong one.
It's okay. Vice Chair Acevedo?
Yes.
You and Chair Hedges is absent. Motion passes with all present members voting yes. Thank you.
We're going on to two A. Approval for Planning Commission regular meetings. Staff, huh? Forum. Man, I got it messed up. Okay, I got it. We got a call on Community Development Director Rogos. For four A.
Yes, Agenda Item four A.
Item four A.
Yes. So Agenda Item four A this evening, commissioners, is a discussion regarding Norco Municipal Code Section 15.01.08. And this is with respect to buildings in that section of the code that do not require permit. At the Planning Commission meeting, the last meeting that, June 11th, the Planning Commission directed staff to agendaize this item. And, you know, this item regarding Section 15.01.08 regarding buildings that don't require permit, out of a concern on potential for misuse, abuse of this provision. So this item before you is for a discussion on that section of the code. And staff is here to basically get a consensus of, you know, any concerns in any direction that may be warranted in terms of potential changes. So with that, I will conclude and we'll go ahead and start a discussion. And I will go ahead and start with Jeff.
Thank you, Alma. I think I was the one that had concerns about this, so thank you. Pretty straightforward. And I don't have necessarily suggestions, but I want to highlight what I see are potential problems that could get abused. And so I would like to see some of the languages tightened up on it. I guess the first one is the detached accessory tool or storage shed that is under 120 square feet. And I know, Lacy, you brought this handout. Is this from our Building Department? Okay. I see some discrepancies in here that is not in our municipal code, which is part of my concern. And I think it is addressed here, so I would like to see it in our municipal code. And one of the items is regarding utilities because the concern here is if somebody can convert some, one of these to essentially a she shed, which a lot of people were doing during the pandemic. And my concern is that it is a very slippery slope to me when something becomes a she shed that can be used as a, an office space, at which point you can then make an argument on when you can work in that office space, at which point then it becomes what is considered occupied space. And so it kind of all goes down that slope. But I do see that in the, the Building Department that it does indicate that it will, that you cannot connect any of the utilities that would require permit. So can I get that confirmation on there? The next one is regarding the animal keeping corral area. I am not sure if there's anything written in here. I did not see anything, but that would restrict the type of use. And my concern is the intent for these pipe corrals is for animal keeping. And this is where I go back to, it's not what is written, it's what is not written. And I don't see anything that would prohibit someone from connecting four of these together. And we're actually allowed five on a half acre lot to connect five of these together and make a covered garage, which we currently do require a permit for. So you could connect four of these in a rectangle and have a 48 by 24, which results in a 1152 square foot cover garage with a creative use of panels. And the entire thing could be covered because we allow each one of those to be covered up to three sides. So I would like to see some sort of language kind of clarifying the allowable use within those pipe corrals. And one of the items on the covered awning, I see potential abuse on this, is I'd like clarification that these awnings only apply to the primary residence, that it cannot or would not apply to the said, like, 120-foot, 120-foot accessory structures, so that they wouldn't be able to attach an awning onto the accessory structure to extend the, the covered area. So it's kind of the quick version of it.
Okay. Sarah, you want to go on?
Sorry, Jeff, I'm trying to catch up with that last item. Can you kind of replay that tape for me?
Yeah, so in a group R3, and you occupy, see, the window awnings that do not project more than 54 inches from the exterior wall, that does not need to be permitted. And so my concern is if we're kind of looking at a slippery slope of the 120-square-foot accessory building, and then if you're able to put in additional awning that projects 53 inches out, you essentially have a patio outside of your 120-foot accessory office.
And that reference that you're reading is not in this material that we just got. This is in the code, is that right?
Correct. It's in the municipal code.
And has, but does that not have to do specifically with single-family residential structures?
It does.
Not the accessories?
No, it says that it's only in that zone. So it's not tied to the structure, it's tied to the zone. So any structure in that zone, as it is written right now, could have that awning.
Okay, so your recommendation is to change the language to?
So that it is only tied to the primary residence that is permitted on that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Then, okay, and then Shannon?
Yeah.
No questions.
No questions? And I always refer to Sarah. No questions. When 120 square feet, I really had, I really have been involved with that one in my own business. Not my business, but working for the city as chief inspectors. In the town we were out, you had to have five foot off, and you had, you couldn't be any taller than the neighbor's fence. If you were 10 feet off, you could go up to, I think it was 12 feet with that type of building, if you had to be 10 feet off. Another thing is, it's like a house, you measure the square footage, it can be big, is what's usable inside. So you're trying to say that they put an awning, maybe just for rain, you can't do that, but a house is considered what's usable inside.
Well, and that's the concern, is that this, this 120-square-foot accessory building is not, it's not, essentially, it's not under the jurisdiction of our code right now.
Well, it is in, it is under the California Building Code.
Well, so that, that would be something that, I guess, Bill, can you provide some clarity on that? Because essentially, we're looking at a tough shed. If, if somebody hauled in a tough shed and dropped it in there.
They make it as cheap as possible, but it's the interior size. When they quote what size building is, they're going to quote what the inside of the building that you're storing, storing things in it. I know, we got really involved with that, on that particular spot. A lot of times, they put an awning over to keep the rain from going in there. I mean, you've seen of a storage, whether there's no protection for rain or anything. And in this town, you'll see a lot of them, and I was thinking about this, just in this particular town. The other towns, they use it for different things. But a lot of people have horses, they'll build that, bring, build that to hold the saddles. Then they'll build that one to put the hay in it. And there is no restriction on how many you can have.
And that is exactly my concern, is that we can, we can stack a bunch of these side by side and have awnings that?
You can't go by side by side.
You have to be five feet away from each other, but then you can have the awning that bridges that five feet. See what I'm saying?
I gotta go back in history of somebody else.
I'm trying to not?
Well, this is what I'm, this is what I'm not trying to argue with, but there was somebody else that was on this committee that always said, if, if. The world, you could do if with a lot of things. If you did this, and if you did, that person did it. And it was, it was kind of sad because they were telling it to the person that was up at the podium. What if you did that? If you did that? If you did that? It could happen anytime, if, which you could do.
Well, yes, do you, do you have a concern for us putting that restriction on there?
I, I don't think you need it. I don't, in this town mostly, because people have it for storage, because we got big lots. Like I said, they'll make a hay room. They don't want to spend the big bucks for a big, you know, pay the dollars on it. So they'll put one. And they'll space it, and they'll build one maybe like for the saddles. They'll build it for gardening. I mean, I've been to people's house, they build them for gardening. They store gardening, everything, their tools, everything else in it. So I don't think limiting what they have, because the reason why, they can't be fixed to the ground, they can't be fixed. They can be moved and everything. So it's not like a permit statement where you have, you know, solid.
Correct. So, and this kind of comes back to my way of reading the code and how I kind of deal with it. Your perspective is how a, the intended user is going to use it. My perspective is, if I am someone who's trying to take advantage of the code, what can I do with it? And I'm trying to protect us from that.
That's the if part in you.
It is, and, and that's?
The code is blank. I mean, you can look at the National, the California Building Code. We added, you know, every, can have a municipal and add on things to it. But that's been around for a long time. And it's the interior, same as a house, you don't quote the outside of the house and the awning, where you've got an eyebrow coming out, you're quoting the square footage as in the inside. I just think that's getting, I don't know, have you, do you have horses?
No. I have.
Yeah. Well, I'm just saying, in Norco, you'll see a lot of them because of that reason, because they need it for storage, for storage. And they don't want to build a big expensive garage.
One of, one of the reasons why I want to kind of bring this up, and I'm hoping that we get some public comments on it, is that I would like to get a realistic feedback on what we can do that keeps the, keeps the flexibility for a horse owner to be able to put these things in, because I understand that they need it for a tax shed, they need it for the hay storage.
Yeah.
But what I want to do is make it so that someone isn't going to be able to turn these into a toy hauler store.
That's where you're going, where the if is.
I, I think?
You'd have a long list. You can't make it into that, or you can't make it into this. I'm not trying to argue with, it's just that I, this has been brought up with me and my career a lot on that part of it, you know. And there is no, no amount that you have. They don't say it, how many amounts you might.
Correct. And that's another concern, is that you can put in as many as you want.
I thought it was you. I went to a party, and it wasn't in Norco, it was another one. And this guy had eight of them. And they had a space, there's space between eight of them, but he made it look like an old western town. Each one was a bar, and each one was this, and that's where he had parties. It was just, it was outside. I go, wow, you know? And everything on it. But the word if, I don't know how many things we're going to have to put down to, to cover the if.
Well, and I think that may be the, the bigger question, is that, that is a creative use of the, the code. And that's what I'm trying to restrict.
As long as it fits the square footage, it's legal. I don't care what you make it into. It's true. You can't tell them, okay, you can't use that as a horse stable for holding, holding your bridles and saddles and everything. You got an eyebrow sticking out because the rain, you did it because the rain was going to rain on it.
Well, and, and that's kind of what I'm trying to get to, is that I have no problem someone putting, that they want to use it for tax shed, want to use it for hay. What I do have a problem is if somebody puts 10 of these up, and they're 10 offices, and they're renting it out to people, using it as workspace.
See, that's the if again. Your if, if they're renting it out.
All right. That's, that's all I got on this.
It's a pet peeve of mine, that's why I'm, I'm not doing it, because I've dealt with it so many times and, and on it, on it. And the only thing to do is municipal code, you have to have a permit. That's sad, that, I mean, you know, that.
You don't need a permit, that's the, that's, that's what I'm trying to?
You probably see a lot of people in Norco with a lot of them.
Well, that's, that's the concern, is that these items are specifically exempt from permitting. So they never need to get reviewed.
The biggest thing is, reason, they can be torn down, or they can be moved and get rid of, not like a concreted in big area, you know, that they did on it, on that part of it. It's a, it's a, not a permit station, because it's not anchored to the dirt.
So Danny, so, so as I understand, your, your input is basically, no changes as it, is that kind of your, your thoughts? Basically, your, your thoughts on that is just, you know, there's no, there's no changes that are required in your, in, are you recommending any, any changes to this?
No, no changes at all. Just like the building code on that part. I've seen them in it, and I, honestly, I've got one. And, and you said, no, there's no wiring to it. Yeah, well, I got, I have solar, which is legal. They make a fixture with the solar, and you turn on the light, you got, and that's it.
So your comment to this is basically, you know, it's, it's fine the way they do?
I have no wiring to it.
Okay. All right. Councilmember, excuse me, councilmember. Thank you, Danny. Commissioner Fiore, any comments to add, basically, to Danny's and Jeff's?
Well, I understand where Jeff's coming from in terms of, of trying to ensure that the use of it is as, is consistent with our code. But the tricky part about use is, especially if it's a closed building, you know, you're not going to know what they've decided to do, whether it's legal or otherwise. And there's no manner of restriction and, and tightening down, I don't believe, anyway, on a particular section of the ordinance where you're going to fully eliminate people's creativity as to what they do with it. I think, you know, what, what occurs is, when they take it over a certain line, that's when a neighbor is affected, and that's when the complaint would come in to address it. I just think we need to state in, in our laws what they're intended for, and expect that that is what they'll be used for. I do agree that we need to, you know, have a permit for any kind of utilities, regardless of the size of the building, because that's a safety issue. But I just, I don't think that we're going to make any headway convincing people to use even 120-square-foot structure for what its intended purpose is, if they've got something else way beyond, you know, what we can think of. And, and there's some, I've seen, in code enforcement, I've seen some amazing things done with 120 square feet. And there's no way you can anticipate what those things are going to be. I just, I just think it can be more, more burden, having all of that in, in a code, than the benefit that will come out of it.
And I also understand where you're coming from, Jeff. But I don't think we can try to understand what people are going to do with it. And we can't control what they do with it. We can try, but I don't think we can. So I don't think any changes should be made.
I agree with Commissioner Fiore and Chaziki. So they've covered all my points, so no comments.
I would say, at the minimum, I'd like to see our municipal code be brought up to the same level as our Building Department handout, where it specifically calls out that no utilities may be run to those 120-square-foot units.
I'll call for a public comments.
Yeah. Anybody going to like to come up for a public comment?
I have not received any public comment at this time.
Pardon me?
No public comment at this time.
Somebody want to make a motion that you want to put it in, or what do we do in this time?
I can read the room. I don't need to put in a motion for it, so.
No, no. It's just, this is just a discussion item for direction, whether I should go forward to the Plan, the City Council and say, hey, you know, this is a direction that I've gotten from, from Planning Commission, they are recommending changes. So I just need a consensus whether to move forward with any, you know, recommended changes. You know, with one, one that Commissioner Shu is make the building code consistent with this, if that's a recommendation that I move forward. And basically, ask our City Council, hey, do you want to, does the council want to entertain a code amendment to facilitate that? Then I need, I just need that direction tonight.
I will make a motion to recommend to City Council to reconcile the Norco Municipal Code, geez, chapter?
15.0?
15.0.
1.01? 1.08, yeah.
1.08, to be consistent with the storage shed and accessory building exemption standards from our Building Department.
Second.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Yes.
Let's take a vote.
Youth Commissioner Lang Louis?
Yes.
Member Shu?
Yes.
Member Fiore?
Yes.
Member Chaziki?
Yes.
Vice Chair Acevedo?
No.
And Chair Hedges is absent. Motion passes with Vice Chair Acevedo voting no.
Okay, we got, what's the next one? Review on that, five A. All right. Going on to five A. Proposed amendment to the previous adopted objective development standards.
Yes, so, thank you. Yeah, so what we'll do this evening, I don't think it's necessary for us to kind of go over the same PowerPoint unless the commission feels that that's necessary. So what we'll do is, you know, you, we've had probably at least, you know, eight, six, six weeks at least to review the objective development standards. So this evening, the agenda item is on the agenda for us to be able to provide a recommendation to the City Council. If the commission is okay, we'll go through, we'll just kind of, the same way we did it for the workshop, is just to go chapter by chapter. And, you know, if there's any, you know, recommended changes, you know, you want to give me, I am asking a recommendation, particularly on the most important items, which is the building height, the parking, and the setbacks. That way, we can move this forward. And then again, that will be presented to the City Council. The City Council will ultimately make the decision to adopt the ODS changes. With that, I think that's the gist of it for tonight. And, yeah, if we can start with chapter, let's see here, two. Chapter two? To see if therein is any clarifications, our consultant is still here, they're able to provide any clarifications that the, the commission may have. He's here for questions, clarifications, and I'm looking for any direction for changes, recommendations to City Council with respect to, with respect to chapter two.
I have one. For the 2.4, or for the points, for C number four?
Page, page number?
Page number 14. I would like to see the chicken coops and unmanaged community gardens get removed, as I feel like both of those are not the best bet for community amenities.
Yeah, the chicken coop sounds great until you've had to be the one to clean the chicken coop. Then it's not so great.
A lot.
Especially with, like, a lot of poultry diseases going through right now. There's currently a ban on it, so...
I have a couple small things. I mean, the bigger elements the commission, or I'm sorry, the council already laid out. A lot of background that I've not really been privy to, so it was interesting to hear, you know, how this, a couple of these projects, especially Hamner and Fourth, some of the impacts around the neighborhood, so, I mean, they've got that well in hand, in my mind, or at least from where I sit. But a couple of small items, table two point three point B. I brought this up at the last meeting.
Page?
Sorry?
Page number?
Oh, twelve. Twelve, sorry. Up in the, the standards grid, under sidewalk material. The gravel, inclusion of gravel would not be appropriate for ADA access on what is typically now a horse trail, or could be the horse trail piece of this puzzle. So concrete pavers and compacted soil like we have now would be certainly appropriate, but I think gravel needs to be axed. Back over on page eleven, I, I also mentioned this at the last meeting, where there is a reference to the street zone allowing for, or sidewalk zone, let me see. I'm sorry, I might be off on this one. Whatever section of the zone in that diagram that allows for businesses possibly, like eateries to bring out seating or benches, page eleven, the bottom. There's the reference to the ability for seating to come out into that sidewalk zone. And I believe that any seating that is brought out should be stationary, non-movable, because we already have in town with a lot of businesses their need to, they believe, and also, you know, quite often bringing product out into their walkways under the covers of, of their businesses, and fooderies, eating areas that we all love to frequent. You can't walk into the building without going around tables and chairs that have been moved out into the walkways. So we'd still need to retain, I'm assuming, four foot width in a sidewalk zone. So those would have to be set back probably parallel to whatever that divide is between the sidewalk zone and the face of the private frontage. So stationery is, was the additional word on that one. And I think that was all.
That it?
So for chapter two, any discussion on the recommendations, or is pretty much consistent?
I think, I think the recommendations was pretty clear across, I mean, not clear, but very voluminous, so I'm not going to rehash any of it. I think the one thing that I would like you guys to consider is what Mayor Greg Newton had mentioned about the, the actual exhibits, and the concern that whatever we do end up showing on it could become a argument for the potential developer. So let's be careful about that on what we show, especially when it comes to access to the neighborhoods. So just kind of that is a general comment.
Okay. We'll move on to chapter three. So that's, that's a big one, so we'll go ahead and, and start...
We're going to the next, oh, we're going to go through them, I thought you said we weren't.
Direction, go ahead, Jeff.
So the, I don't want, I won't go into very specifics on it, but I want to kind of reiterate one of the points that I have made is that I think, I think we all understand that we are restricted by what the, what the state government is imposing on the city and what we can and can't do. But I want to make sure that we're being smart about it, and especially when it comes to building heights. When we're talking about allowing additional heights, I want to make sure that we are able to answer any of the citizens of the city that say, why did you give them an additional five feet of height? That we can point to and say, it's because we gave them addition, because that additional five feet gave them this amount of additional density that translated to us being able to keep something. So I want, I want us to be able to back up everything with a reason that we can point to and say, that, that contributed to the density that helps protect us. So if a, if a height, if we allowed additional height for aesthetics, that's great, but if that aesthetics doesn't ultimately help us fight the battle of the density, because that's what they're going to come at us with. Because if we gave them design criterias, but we don't, we don't back it up with a density component of it, I feel like that's a toothless kind of approach to it, that I want to make sure that whatever we give away, it's for good reason.
So what you're saying is that the height should be, make sure it's calibrated to the density?
Correct.
Yeah.
If we, if we are talking about, okay, we're going to give you forty-eight feet of height, let's put in there, at, at a hundred feet back, and you're able to get forty-eight feet, go four stories. Let's not restrict it to three stories, so that we're actually getting a density bonus and getting more units into that.
Right.
Because I don't, I don't want to give them another fifteen feet of height if it doesn't help us in terms of the, ultimately, what we're up against, because they're going to say they're not able to meet the density numbers, and so they're going to use that as a way to get around other items.
Yeah, and we calibrated the, the height, the stories are very important to limiting that height, and we calibrated that, you know, based, well, that's what those exhibits are, with the, the parking exhibits we're showing, is that when you have that increased parking requirement, you need that fourth story. So, and, and that increased parking requirement is, is the base. I mean, you're starting with that. In order to, to be able to build with those parking requirements and the current ODS, you need to go to four stories. If you reduce the parking requirements, you might be able to get, get by with three, as is actually evidenced by the, by the Third and Hamner project, the Frontier project exemplifies that. So, in other words, the height, in this case, is tied to the number of parking spaces, so, by having... And then if you put it all on surface, those additional parking spaces, then you're probably not going to meet your density. You may be at eighteen D per acre or something, for instance.
If you go to four floors and have a ground floor garage?
Yeah.
Would you be able to then meet your parking requirements?
Uh, yeah. Should, yeah.
That's, that's one of the options I like to see, because I do think that parking is a very real concern.
Right.
In any of these developments, we're not going to be the ones at the other end of the phone call.
Right, yeah.
When residents are seeing that their streets are being parked up by everybody.
And, and that's where the four stories comes from, is that parking requirement. So, yeah, so, so in other words, it's tied to parking and density, yep.
Do we have any other comments or concerns on chapter three? Yes, go ahead, Danny?
Sorry, what's that?
Chapter three, do you have any comments, concern, Commissioner Fiore?
I gave mine for, for chapter three?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So regarding the flex, the commercial flex, the diagrams and the image given, it's not really Norco. I'm not sure if that could be, like, add a little bit more element of Norco with the diagrams that were given.
I'm sorry, which, which page?
Uh, with page number twenty. And the other question I had was regarding, are we going to have a horse tie-up area if we have the flex commercial, or is that not even an option?
It should be an option if we don't have it in here.
Okay.
I think that would be tied into the public space requirements, anyway, rather than, because with, with the limited frontage that we have, I don't think anybody's going to want to tie their horses up to five feet away from the...
I know, but just wondering if we're going to keep it similar to what Norco already has.
And, and you're talking about the horse tie-up for a commercial?
For commercial, yeah, for commercial, because commercial has that, so is that going to be incorporated with this, or is it not going to be?
I, I think it, our read of the city's desire is that that would be seen as, as an equestrian amenity that reflects...
Andrew, were you going to say something?
Yeah, I was just going to add that, yeah, because it's tied to the overall amenity collection, it can really be combined with any of these frontages. Because the, whether it's a trail, and then the tie-backs can be in front of commercial, or, or near other equestrian amenities, so that's independent, those can be provided in a lot of locations.
I mean, I think we already talked about the parking, so I'm not going to go over the parking again.
Sorry, on the, on the horse tie-up, we can provide some dimensions to make sure that that works, so, so it isn't squeezed in or non-workable, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Alma, I have a question for you, and it's just because the exhibits remind me of something specifically Fourth and Hamner. Last, last time I looked, those are three separate parcels owned by the same owner, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a condition in town, you know, you and I have talked about it, where a large development business center was created over four separate parcels, and those parcels were never tied together. And it was a single developer, and it was all hunky-dory until the developer decided to sell two of them to one new owner and the other two to another owner. As a result, when it came time to address a lot of property maintenance issues, because these are now not the developer, and they have a whole different perspective on, you know, what's property maintenance and what isn't, and they weren't very good about it, either one of them. They ran aground because all of the utilities had been placed in that business center as if it was a single parcel. So one owner had control of all the lighting, another owner had control of the plumbing, another one had control of, of a huge landscape issue that it took both of them to get together and do, I mean, it was a nightmare. So I'm wondering if projects such as this, for example, Hamner and Fourth, which is currently three separate parcels, if we would, in a document like this, establish that they have to be combined to a single parcel before it's developed? Because today, it is still a nightmare, and it's five years later.
The thing is, a lot of times, what, and the developers do is what, kind of similar to what was done at Third and Hamner, they do a new subdivision to create several lots, and that's what they did with Third and Hamner. And it's not so much to sell them off, but it's more for development purposes, because, you know, they, they got to finance the first as, as they move it. It's more of a, a business reason why they do that. So what they typically do is, yes, they'll combine them, but they'll kind of reorganize them to fit, you know, the development. So what typically happens is we, we condition the project so that there's reciprocal parking, reciprocal access, and I think in that sense, it would probably become some kind of, what do they call it? HOA that would, you know...
Have control over...
That would control that, yes, that's, that's the word.
Overall.
And I don't know if Juan has something to that, for that respect, because it is, it is a problem too, where the, sometimes, you know, there's lack of maintenance, because nobody knows who's in charge of that particular lot. But generally speaking, if, if, if the project is set up correctly, and there is, you know, a managing, you know, component, I think you eliminate that project, that issue.
Or, or would it be better to say that each parcel has to be independent of the other for all utilities?
And that's how I was going to comment on that, that's what needs to be done, is either they need to be independent of each other, or you're going to have to have easements granting that utility to run on the other parcel. But you can't necessarily have all the utilities on multiple parcels that are feeding to different properties.
That is the case.
No, I, I know, I know.
It's awful.
But that's why you've got to kind of like clean it up before it gets done.
So I just think we need to look at it...
And keep it as like standalone.
Look at that issue and prevent it from being a future one.
Yeah, the reality is that may be a function separate from the objective standards, that we can definitely, you know, confer with our attorney, which was the best way to address it.
Okay.
Yeah, whether that's in the HDO zoning, or maybe, it definitely could be, there could be a policy in the general plan that kind of addresses direction on that, and then the mechanism for that. I mean, the ODS doesn't really deal with utilities and stuff like that. It's more kind of, what's it look like, and what building envelope is it, and that sort of thing, so...
Well, well, my point was that if the developer was to have held on to all four of those parcels, you know, forever, and they would be treating it like a single parcel, and so they would be able to manage what was going on with it. But now with two separate owners, it's, they can't address the issues, because they don't, they don't want to, and they don't know how.
I don't think we could address it in the ODS, though, in terms of how we can control that, though.
The merging of properties before a full development, you don't think that's appropriate in the ODS?
Well, I don't, I don't think we can legally force that, is what I'm trying to...
Well, yeah, I'd be interested in...
And, and the reality is, again, I don't think it would be something that included in the ODS, but something that's more kind of a, we can probably look at it, the different mechanism to, you know, potentially address that, which be a code amendment, or, you know, a policy, or whatever is legally appropriate, yes.
All right, I understand.
I mean, and we can look at it from, separately.
If we're, if we're done with the other one, the chapter four, five, I do have two really quick and relatively straightforward comments that I'd like to make adjustments to. Chapter seven.
I have one quick one on chapter four. Just quickly about the parking. I don't, I know we have a problem with parking, but I would at least want to see at a minimum the one to, zero to one bedroom units have at least two parking spaces, because as, currently, it's one, and most people will probably have two people in one bedroom with two cars, so...
So I do, I do have a suggestion for that, knowing that parking is as tight as it is. So I kind of understood from everybody that was up here on council, they kind of, they were reluctantly accepting the numbers. I did have a suggestion on it, because we have listed the number of parking per unit, for the, the bedroom size, but there is one that says one guest parking per four unit. Now, if we reduce that to one guest parking per two unit, or even three, that starts lifting the number without it being tied directly to that, so that it increases the overall number of parking to a level, but doesn't tie it directly to the units. So I'd like to see that flushed out a little bit, maybe?
Yeah, I agree.
I don't know if one per two is the right one, or if one per three, but I think one per four is too relaxed, considering that everybody, I mean, I have four cars for my household of two adults, so, and I'm pretty sure I'm not abnormal in that.
So these parking suggestions, or parking number suggestions, are in relation to what's in the book, or in this proposal here, so that's our starting point, is a... So that's our starting point as opposed to what's in the previous set, okay. Yeah, yeah, I think that is a good way of dealing with, of getting a surplus that isn't some, there may be, need to be some sort of management mechanism maybe to allot unit, allot spaces or something like that. I think, yeah, we can look into, we can look into that.
So two quick adjustments. So page 45, on mechanical electrical equipment. I wanted to get some clarity in the language there that we want to be screened from the public right-of-way. So I've had to deal with a lot of jurisdictions that weren't clear on it and I was able to play with points on the site where I took my line of sight. So I want to make sure that we're clarifying that the equipment, the screening is being taken from public right-of-way at ground level or at six feet above the ground level. At the highest elevation of the public right-of-way, so they're not taking it from the lowest point on a hill. And the other one on this page is the last item on the, on the wall between the development and the A1 R1. I just want to add clarity that the 10-foot wall is measured from the R1 A1 site. So if there is a grade difference, that the 10-foot is from the residential side.
Okay, sure.
Alma, with the discussion that we had with council about the walls and fences and it being pretty much paired with our specific plan residential, that, that would be included in these recommendations too?
If, if that's the consensus of the planning commission, yes.
Want to move to public comments?
Are you done?
Any other comments on any portions of the ODS? I'm sorry, any other comments on, on the ODS, any, any of the chapters at this time? Okay?
We're moving on to public comments. Anybody got signed?
First speaker is Bill Naylor.
Evening again, commissioners. Based on your comments, I've had two, made two notes here. One, Commissioner Fiori was talking about the horse trails inside these projects and it indicated no gravel. I agree with that, but I am concerned that it should be consistent with our overall plan for trails, which says it should be DG. We also have a moratorium on pavers or any kind of things that are across the trail. Now, if it is not in, if it's in a residential area, if it's in a commercial area, of course, then you're allowed to do the pavers. So I just wanted to make sure that this was consistent with the, the city's regular plan on it. The other thing was is, I'm sorry, I can't pronounce your name? Shannon, okay. Shannon brought up the fact on the tie rails. I'm not sure, I'm not against tie rails, but I, again, generally speaking, we try to go with corrals for safety if a horse gets loose, pulls back or whatever. Especially in some of these projects, these two big specific areas that we're talking about, they're too close to major streets and we would really want, recommend or strongly that they be corrals, not tie rails. But I could see maybe a few tie rails being in place for those that really want to take a chance. And it also adds the agricultural theme to the area. Thank you.
I have no further public comment.
Jeff, anything anymore you want to bring out, bring up?
I do. I would like to agendize for a future meeting, a discussion.
Commissioner Fury, I think we need to finish off the, of the agenda item and then we can go into, my apologies. So we have, yeah, my apologies. Yeah, so we have a resolution that is before the planning commission for a recommendation, so we need a motion.
You can go ahead and go ahead with this one.
I will make a motion to approve resolution 2025-14 with amendment to ODS from July 9, 2024, with exhibit AMB along with the discussed amendments to city council.
Second.
Second?
I did, second.
Okay, so this is a motion to approve the resolution with all of the amendments that have been discussed tonight, exhibit A and B. Would you like me to go over or do you want to go over the amendments? Or you just want to go with the amendments that were discussed tonight? Okay.
So basically, it's, it's the amendments to attachment A, which is, which is the new ODS document that will, yes, okay.
Youth Commissioner Ling Lewis?
Yes.
Member Shu?
Yes.
Member Fiori?
Yes.
Member Tredziki?
Yes.
Vice Chair Acevedo?
Yes.
And Herr Hedges is absent. Motion passes with all present members voting yes, thank you.
Commission, staff. This is all different.
My turn now? So the next item on the agenda.
Just adjourned.
Is it my turn? Yeah, we're on agenda item six, which is commission and staff communication. And this is where we could, yeah. This is where Commissioner Fury has, has a, would like to speak.
Okay. I would like to agendize a discussion for a future meeting to discuss chapter 18 dot 37 dot 10 of the municipal code, specifically temporary signage and its type, display, duration of display specifically. Is that enough?
Do we need to make a motion or does?
So I have, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Youth Commissioner Ling Lewis?
Yes.
Member Shu?
Yes.
Member Fiori?
Yes.
Member Tredziki?
Yes.
Vice Chair Acevedo?
Yes.
And Herr Hedges is absent. Motion passes with all present members voting yes, thank you.
Now you can close it.
Like to adjourn. Tough night.